Start by asking those who are here with the intention of speaking on any item, whether on or off the agenda, to please fill out a yellow speaker card and turn it into the city clerk so that we can help manage the number of people who would like to speak on any given topic. Okay, and with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilmember Hilton will lead us.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. We don't have an invocation today, so everyone can be seated. City Clerk.
Sharon comes to us from the city of Milpitas where she was the Building Safety Director. She has over 20 years' experience in community development, including stops at Walnut Creek and Santa Clara. She's also at a time been the president of the California Building Association and so she is very much in tune with industry standards and a lot of the advocacy work that those groups do on behalf of cities. And she is a graduate of UCLA in both a master's and a bachelor's and is a certified professional engineer, so she does everything. She has recently relocated to Gilroy and lives about 1.8 miles away from City Hall and her hobbies include shopping and so you've come to the right place. So with that, I'd like to introduce Sharon Goey. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, Jimmy. I'm very glad to be joining the city of Gilroy during this time of remarkable change. I know Gilroy is undergoing lots of development and growth. I got to work with my team last week and we have a really talented, dedicated and hardworking team. I'm really looking forward to working with everyone in the city and the community and collaborating with all the stakeholders to enhance the quality of life, strengthen economic development and make a long-lasting positive impact in the city of Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Okay, and our city clerk Ty will introduce our new deputy city clerk.
Yes, Madam Mary, would you mind doing the chief?
Oh, not at all.
Please, thank you.
That's the order you... Okay, Chief Espinoza.
Madam Mayor, members of council and the public, I'd like to introduce our newest police officer, Gage Ferris. Today's his actual first day here with the city. He's the second oldest of five kids. Graduated high school in Gresham, Oregon in 2011 and studied criminal justice and criminology at Southern Oregon University for two days. Right after college, he started working in the trades as a skilled labor informant doing remodeling on residential buildings. He also volunteered as a wrestling coach, which he plans to continue to do so here in his new community and home in Gilroy. On a personal note, Gage and his siblings grew up in the foster care system in Oregon and he is extremely proud of what his siblings and him have accomplished as individuals. They are his inspiration and the reason for him wanting to go into law enforcement. He has seen that even the smallest amount of compassion can turn around the life of an individual that has the intrinsic motivation to make a positive change in their own life and their community. In his spare time, Gage usually finds himself outdoors. He likes to do small carpentry projects and maintenance on his vehicles or fixing anything else around the house that is in need. He would like to go on camping trips and fish a little bit more and his goal is to go back to school and finish his bachelor's degree. Please help me welcome Gage Ferris.
Thank you very much. I feel very honored to be given this opportunity to serve in this community and I look forward to bringing my hard work and resiliency to this career as well. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Where did Ty go? Oh, there you are. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to introduce Christina Ruiz is our new deputy city clerk with over five years' of experience in local government administration. Christina began her career in recreation as an office assistant here in Gilroy and later be promoted to management assistant in community development. Christina also provided supports for the city clerk's office for a brief period of time last year. As a deputy city clerk, Christina will be assisting me in all aspects of the city clerk's office, from assisting staff with staff reports, elections and public records requests. In addition, she will be a part of the implementation of the new agenda management software, including preparing instructions and conducting end-user trainings for all necessary staff. Christina is a powerful force in the workplace and uses her positive attitude and tireless energy to encourage others to work hard and succeed. Christina is inspired daily by her husband and her two sons. In her free time, Christina likes to read, bake and hike. Please welcome Christina Ruiz.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be back and I look forward to learning a lot from being in the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome back. Okay, under ceremonial items, we have none. Presentations to the council. We have the Annual Arts and Culture Commission presentation by their vice chair Alexandra Perdue. Are you joining her currently?
No, I'm just setting it up.
Okay, got it.
Hi, everybody. I'm Alexandra Perdue. I'm a harvest music educator and a regular educator and I joined the Arts and Culture Commission three months ago. So let's go right through the presentation. The mission for the Arts and Culture Commission is to be an advocate for culture and artistic activities in the Gilroy community, to build bridges and promote communication through cultural and artistic opportunities for all individuals thereby improving the quality of life in our city. This last year, we awarded the City of Gilroy Arts and Culture Commission Community Service Award to Donald Cretto in a memorial and we hosted a high school art show in collaboration with the Sixth Street Studios in May and most of the commissioners were actually present as well as Karina. We have also been at the past two art walks with our own table, one with a chalk show and the other with music and art projects for little kids. We also developed and awarded the first community engagement grant of $2,500 to Nanos for 2022 Chalk Art Festival event that's planned this fall. And there were two sold bench plaques at the Gateway Park from our fundraising program. The Arts and Culture Commission work plan, the GPS art trail is starting to... We're starting to put together the coordinates of all of the art installations in the city of Gilroy to help maintain and improve the city infrastructure. As far as fundraising goes, we're continuing to advertise for the installation of bench plaques and we're organizing fundraising events, hopefully not just a fundraising event but also in support of arts and culture that will improve, maintain and improve the city infrastructure as well. And in downtown, we've been assisting in the art walk and also collaborating with local business owners and nonprofits in order to raise money and art supplies and music supplies to help them get their own arts programs off the ground as far as education goes. And several of us have been actually helping out at the summer camp this summer to make sure all the kids can get arts activities. We're hoping to drive downtown economic development by bringing more events and larger events to downtown through collaboration with local business owners. And the last item was the ACC Grant Program. We want to create ongoing engagement with the local artists through the grant award and that's going to help with neighborhood equity. This year... Oh, I went backwards. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Thank you very much. Wonderful presentation, that's a lot. Okay, item 3.2 is public comment by members of the public for items not on the agenda but within our subject matter jurisdiction. And Ty, how many cards you have?
I received 13 speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, because we have such a long agenda and because there are a lot of people in here who may decide to turn in cards later, I would like to limit this to one minute, okay, for each comment? So if you could please... Anyone who knows you've turned a speaker card, could you please come and sit in the front row so that you'll be one after the other?
The first speaker is Hazel Quintero, followed by Xavier Garcia, followed by Isabel Santos.
Okay, you have... The timer should be visible. Okay.
Good afternoon, council, mayor and community members. My name is Hazel Quintero and intern at Caras. I'm here in BIA have the youth and here in Gilroy to speak on a need for youth center. I myself was an at-risk youth who would have benefited from the resources like the ones Caras provides today. Gilroy benefit from youth center like the one in our neighboring city Morgan Hill. A youth center, or in better words, a community center ensures that our city provides a safe space for those who need pro-social activities in their lives. Having a youth center will keep our youth busy and active while also bringing in job and volunteer opportunities for those in need. In 2018, Gilroy was number four in the top 10 list for duplicated arrests and citations in Santa Clara County. In 2019, Gilroy had the highest arrest rate for misdemeanors in Santa Clara. Since then, the numbers only keep rising. To stop this and to have our city zip code, or also known as 95020, stay out of those top 10 reports, we need to provide a space and resources for those youth at no cost and keep our youth out of the juvenile justice system. Thank you.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Xavier Garcia, followed by Isabel Santos, followed by Liana Rivera.
Good evening, city council members. I am asking the city council to consider building a youth center fitting for Gilroy's community's youth. I am aware of the youth center here in Gilroy near San Jose Park, but personally feel that it is too small for Gilroy's youth and just not adequate. We need a youth center more designed for youth that fitting size for communities or for our community with specific activity spaces, including an activity room, kitchen, computer room, teen room, multipurpose room, gymnasium, game room and an outdoor activities area along with an aquatic center. By doing this, do youth have a place for young people or where young people can meet and participate in variety activities and could help develop their social, emotional, physical and cognitive abilities which would benefit the Gilroy's community as a whole by lowering their arrest rate of youth? And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Isabel Santos, followed by Liana Rivera, followed by Della Sandoval.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Isabel Santos. I'm an intern at Caras. I am here to speak about opening a youth center in Gilroy. Growing up, my parents didn't have enough money to put me in any sports or any programs. Not being in any programs or sports, I was influenced by gangs, drugs and a lot of violence. When it came to Caras as a youth, I realized that being here, doing productive things like volunteering and going to groups like See Nachli NYC was better than being out in the streets looking for trouble. Just in Gilroy alone, we have the highest duplicate arrest rate being 182 arrests in 2020. I believe youth incarceration rates would go down highly if these youth had a place where they feel like they belong. At Caras, many youth go to do homework, eat food, use the Wi-Fi or just to kick it with their friends. The problem is our office isn't that big and we don't like to turn down youth. Everyone is welcome. It would be so much more better if we had a recreation center where it has a gym room, a field, basketball courts or even a pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Liana Rivera, followed by Della Sandoval, followed by Delia Hernandez.
Okay, if your name was called, can you please come and sit in the front row?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. The reason why I'm here to speak to the city council member, the committee is to consider the idea of having a youth center. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The reason why I'm here to speak with the city council members and the community to consider the idea of having the city... Oh, to consider to have the idea to have a youth center instead of building an ice rink for the San Jose Sharks. Low-income families couldn't afford to take their kids to places like these, let alone to be able to afford the gear using the skating or the cost of the skating classes. A youth center would gladly impact our community by providing a space for those kids who have nothing to do all day, by providing them with a place to do pro-show activities such as sports, working out, homeworks, arts and crafts, reading and poetry and so much more than the possibility of endless... Not only would it affect the youth justice reports by a great amount, our children would be able to have access to positive opportunities instead of going out endangering their lives.
Okay, I'm sorry, the time is up now. I let you go a little over because we started a little late, but thank you. Next...
Graduation.
You can't finish, the time is up. Thank you. Everybody gets the same amount of time. Next person?
Della Sandoval, followed by Delia Hernandez, followed by Reyna Denise.
Hi, my name is Delia Sandoval and I have two children, one 18 and the other is five years old. I live at the Alexander Stations, which is the apartment on 10th Street. We are not liable to have children of the age of 13 to play on the basketball courts or to be in the playgrounds area, right? So therefore, there's going to be a lot of youth or teenagers that are not going to be able to have nowhere to go. And I just wanted to kind of state this because of the fact that it's really serious. I mean, they tend to get in some reckless and stuff like that in the apartment building itself, but imagine when they go out to the public as a community, it's just going to be not a good scene, you know, like a lot of teenagers act out, tend to act out and stuff like that because they don't have nowhere to go. Their families are getting kicked out because of the fact that the teenagers are causing reckless inside the apartment building. So it would be a good idea to get a recreation center on the east side. Like they said, Caras isn't too small in order to bring the kids there to, you know, to get them on the right track. So it would just be beneficial.
I'm sorry, the time.
Yeah.
I know. Thank you though, thank you. Next speaker?
Delia Hernandez, followed by Reyna Denise, followed by Donnie Ramirez.
Okay, so there should be more people sitting in the front row. If your name was called, please come on up.
Hola, buenas tardes. Yo se que usted no habla español pero quiero representar como la comunidad latina y yo sé que aquí muchos hablan español. Nosotros estamos a gusto pues con las comodidades que hay aquí en Gilroy pero si hubiera un centro para los niños como adolescentes que tuvieran...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
We have a translator that can translate for on behalf of the council.
Okay. Do you wish to be translated?
Sí, por favor.
Okay.
Si, este, como le digo, yo sé que no habla español. Nosotros la comunidad latina, yo siento que estamos como olvidados.
So being a part of the community, we feel like we're forgotten?
Yo tengo un hijo adolescente de 17 años que no estudia, no trabaja, tiene depresión.
I have a 17-year-old son who doesn't work, who has depression.
Y por falta de recursos, no he podido como ponerlo en un centro, que hubiera un centro así donde él tuviera como... Perdón. Como clases de algo, de básquet, duol, de música, pero desgraciadamente no hay porque como somos comunidad latina, estamos muy olvidados nosotros, la verdad.
So being that there's no resources for our youth, I feel like being part of the Latino family, we're forgotten and really not represented.
Y yo sé que usted lo puede hacer porque tienen los recursos y tienen la ayuda de todos los que están aquí. Yo sé que usted lo puede hacer para que muchos adolescentes, he visto niños de 13, 14 años drogándose porque los papás tenemos que trabajar.
And being that... Being a part of the children ages 13 to 14 that she has noticed basically using drugs and seeing so many overdoses.
Y niñas de 13, 14 años salen embarazadas también por falta de algún centro que hubiera aquí y yo sé que usted lo puede hacer.
Okay, I think time is up after that. Okay, Christina, go ahead.
So I know that you guys have the ability to make this center happen and just seeing also women or children who are 13 and 14 are also becoming pregnant due to the lack of resources.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Reyna Denise, followed by Donnie Ramirez, followed by Remundo Armanderas.
Okay, who was the second one you called?
Donnie Ramirez.
Is Donnie Ramirez here? Oh, the second, I'm sorry, I meant the next one. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. I want to advocate for the building of the youth center. I thought I am aware of the central youth center in Gilroy. I have found that it is simply too small for the city's youth. The city of Gilroy should develop a youth central improvement for Gilroy's youth if it can't afford to invest in San Jose Sharks stadium as well as Gilroy's youth since Gilroy's has the highest number of juvenile arrests in Santa Claras County. And... And... My bad, I can't say the word. And personal witness the negativity events of not having a more stable youth center. We want the... We want the city youth to be the city's council's top priority.
Thank you.
My bad, I'm kind of shy.
That's okay, you did a great job. You did a great job. Thank you. Next speaker?
Donnie Ramirez, followed by Remendo Armanderas, followed by Michelle Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Remundo Armentares, Executive Director with Caras. I'm here to advocate on behalf of Caras, the Latino youth we work with for adding the construction of a youth center in Gilroy's east side to the next agenda for the next city council meeting. Gilroy has had the highest youth arrest rates in the county last year in the top three zip codes in the county since 2018. So since 2018, we've regularly placed in the top three zip codes for youth arrests. It's also scored regularly since 2013 in the top four zip codes of neighborhoods in East San Jose that are much larger than the city of Gilroy itself. Caras is concerned that after years of advocating with city leadership here in Gilroy, youth are still not a priority. We believe that this may be because of the racial disparity, disproportionality of Latino youth entering the justice system here in Gilroy. Caras has seen youth centers work as a solution for youth crimes and delinquency work in our neighboring communities of San Jose and Morgan Hill. We ask that the city council add the construction of a youth center on the agenda for the next city council meeting to address this very urgent issue. We'd like the community and local leaders to give it the time and attention it deserves.
I'm sorry, time is up.
Okay.
But thank you. Thank you. Next speaker?
I wanted to make sure that Donnie Ramirez was skipped.
He already spoke.
Okay, so that was not Reyna Denise. Okay, thank you. Michelle Nelson, followed by Jane Howard and Ella Petru.
Good evening, Mayor Blankley and council members. My name is Michelle Nelson and I'm here tonight to express my concern regarding the possibility of the development of a sand and gravel mining operation on Sergeant Ranch property, also known as Uristic? Yeah. Uristac, sorry. Among the Amamutsen tribal band. This property is just south of Gilroy in our own backyard and I encourage the Gilroy City Council to take a position in opposition. I know Councilmember Marks has asked for it to be placed on a future agenda, but the window is closing. The county planning commission meets on September 25th and the deadline for submitting comments is the 26th. There are four other city councils in the area which have unanimously adopted resolutions in opposition to this project, namely Santa Cruz, Morgan Hill, Santa Clara and Sunnyvale. All of the resolutions point to the cultural significance of this land but also to the importance of this habitat for wildlife, particularly when it comes to wildlife crossing. And please check protecturostac.org for more letters. And I'm over, but I have the resolutions right here which I'll submit. And I'll be back.
Okay, thank you. All right, next speaker?
Jane Howard and Ella Petru, they're together as one.
Okay.
Yes, we are together as one. Hi, good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce the new president/CEO of Visit Gilroy, Ella Petrasova. We're all getting that name down, I know. Ella actually is a Gilroy resident and she's a business and management professional who brings 10 years of experience to the role. She will be overseeing all Visit Gilroy marketing communications, managing California Welcome Center operations staff and work with our local community partners, including the Economic Development Partnership, all of you of course, and Visit California and the Central Coast Tourism Council for supporting long-term economic recovery and growth of Gilroy as a recreation visitor destination. She has 20 seconds to say hello. Ella Petrasova.
Welcome, Ella.
Hi, everyone. I am very excited to get to know everyone and to be a leader in the community and to collaborate with everyone and hear out everyone's ideas and I'm very ecstatic to make an impact in the development of Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, great. Okay, do we have any more public speakers?
Yes, we have Margi Estrada or Nantia Estrada, followed by Araceli Vaquera, followed by Gabriela Mendoza.
Okay, can you repeat those again because the front row is empty. So if there's more speakers, you should be... Could you please come to the front row if your name was called? It helps with efficiency. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
I just want to start by telling, informing the city council to follow those council norms and according to your own writing in your city council, for every speaker, if you have 20 speakers, then you're 20 minutes. If it's 10, if it's 11 or 20, then it's two minutes. And if it's 10, it's three minutes. With that, I'm going to just say that we need a youth center here in Gilroy. We did some status reports and finding out that what it costs to build a youth center here in Gilroy with the Morgan Hill Sustainable Center that they have, it's Aquatic Center, and the costs are... Want to give that to you guys, I'm going to send it to you in email. But what the youth center will do is support and address youth safety, to do activities, a place to work out, a place to have community rooms for families and children and for parents and services. We don't have a youth center. We need your support to create one. And we want to also bring this up to the capital improvement program that's coming up on the agenda. We want to make sure that's implemented in that plan because we need a youth center. Remundo mentioned about San Jose about having...
I'm sorry. That's okay, we got the message, thank you. Next speaker?
Araceli Vaquera, lastly Gabriela Mendoza afterwards.
Good evening, hi, Araceli Vaquera. I am new to Gilroy, so I'm sorry if I don't know you all yet. The reason I'm here, I'm a concerned citizen. I recently moved near Las Animas Park by Hannah Street. We have a small parking lot. It's not lighted, there's no gate. What we have been finding for the last several weeks, aside from excessive fireworks, homeless people speeding in and out, again homeless staying outside, people drinking, fights, loud music past 11 o'clock. I have a six-year-old. He is scared to go outside of the house. I don't want to live in fear. I want this to be addressed and I need your help to do it. I believe it's Ms. Marcus, I think you are our councilwoman in that district. I'd love to set up an appointment. I want this addressed. I don't want to live in fear here in Gilroy. I know, I've heard great things about Gilroy. I'm all about that youth center that I'm listening about. So I'm just here to make it better, to make it safer for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no districts in Gilroy, just so you know. Everybody's at large. That's okay, thank you. Next speaker? Next speaker?
Gabriela Mendoza.
There's no districts, that's why we need a big youth center here. It's embarrassing that, you know, there's no district here but we have a youth center. Anyways, good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Gabriela Mendoza and I'm here this evening to comment about the importance and need of a youth center in Gilroy. Not a room with arts and crafts, video games and board games, but a center with different sports available, a workout room, aquatics area and with daily workshops for youth to empower them and build their self-esteem. We need a youth center built on the east side of Gilroy in a location where all the low-income and underserved families can go as well, where all youth, not only those on the east side can attend and have a safe place and a place to disconnect from reality at home, school and the streets. A place to connect for once with themselves, their goals, their talents. A place to connect for once with themselves, their goals, their talents, skills, and most importantly, their mental healing. Not only will a youth center in Gilroy like the one I've described would be, will decrease youth incarceration in Gilroy, but also keep youth out of the streets and lower the.
Ma'am, the time is up. Thank you.
Decrease early diabetes and early health issues our youth and families face.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing the public, closing public comment for this item. Reports of council members. Councilmember Braco.
Just a quick.
Councilmember Armandares.
No.
Councilmember Marks.
Just real quick, Gilroy Gardens is sponsoring family fun nights on Friday night, starting in the middle of August, going to the end of September. They, for a special separate ticket, you can do Explorer Night with your families. You dress up as an explorer. You go around finding clues around the park. The GDPA, the Downtown Business Association, is sponsoring their last Thursday Night Live. It's a tribute to the rodeo, so come out and enjoy the country western band and dress up for some line dancing fun. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of my assigned committees were on summer recess too, but I wanted to take the time to, from Visit Gilroy, to welcome our new Visit Gilroy CEO, Ella. And thank you, Jane, for your years of service and dedication to Gilroy. Jane will stay on staff with Ella for the month of August to ensure a smooth transition and the leadership of the organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of quick items. Councilmember Tovar and I had an opportunity to hold the town hall a couple of weeks ago over at Tempo downtown. Talked about a wide variety of things going on with regard to the city, specific to kind of business issues. So that included updates on the ICE Center, downtown parking, public utilities, and how those work with city actors and private actors, as well as the idea of potentially pursuing something like a pop-up park in certain parts of the city, as well as getting updates on high-speed rail, and a variety of other items. Please note that you don't have to attend one of the town halls to reach out if you have questions or ideas about how we can better serve business or better improve the quality of life, specifically downtown. So please feel free to reach out to any of us. As mentioned, there are no districts, so we all represent you. But Councilmember Tovar, thank you for participating in that. An update from the Santa Clara Valley Water District, I said, is our city representative with the district. Just as a reminder, given the continuing drought, the water district is asking that residents do not water their lawn more than two times a week. So two times a week for ornamental lawns, and please do so after the hours of 6:00 p.m. and before 9:00 a.m. So don't do it in the middle of the day when it's really hot and that water's going to evaporate. So just a reminder there. A couple of other quick items, the Gilroy Youth Task Force. We have a couple of representatives on that up here, myself, but also Councilmember Braco and Mayor Blankley. We are thankful for the donations that we have received from Robinson and Moretti Inc., as well as the Ford Store in Morgan Hill. So just up the road, so thank you to both of those institutions. Another quick item from the Youth Task Force, ice cream with a cop is going on tomorrow. So if you want to get some ice cream and cool down, it's expected to be warm again tomorrow. Between four and seven over at the GPD parking lot, you can take part and receive some free ice cream and interact with some of our local officers. And then finally, Digital Nest, which is a program that offers online skills training and graphic design and tech skills for youth. That is, they are opening a center here in Gilroy. It's going to be at the CMAP Building. It's something we've been working for, for a long time. They have existing sites in Watsonville and Salinas. This is the first one they're going to have in Gilroy that'll open up later this month, so we're all very excited. And welcome our youth. Check them out at the CMAP Building. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm just going to piggyback on that. At Gilroy Youth Task Force, thanks to those donations, we're able to sponsor a nice portion of National Night Out. So that's a donation, a donation check that we did, which will be on October 4th. And I also want to welcome Ella, Jane, the new Jane. Thank you. I'll stop calling you that after Ella on her own. And yeah, I'll move on to item number five, which is council correspondence. We have none. Future council-initiated items. Seeing none. All right, item seven, consent calendar. Unless somebody wants to remove something from consent, I'm going to go to public comment.
I receive no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment.
May I approve?
Second.
So that was a motion by Councilmember Leroy Munoz and seconded by Councilmember Tovar, and we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Item eight is bids and proposals. We have none. Item nine, public hearings. Consideration of the Report of Abatement of Weeds and Refuse within the city of Gilroy. An adoption of a resolution of the city council of the city of Gilroy confirming the imposition of assessment liens against the land. First, I will ask if we have any ex parte communications to disclose. None. Nobody has had? Okay. All right. I'm supposed to identify what? Yes, I do. I want to make sure that we all understand what ex parte communications are. So if you have, Andy, step in if I don't do it correctly. But if you have spoken with anybody on that list, for example, if anyone called you, or those are things that are part of ex parte communications. It doesn't mean that you only speak to the, an applicant or something. So if you've spoken to anybody about the item that's on the agenda, and it's a public hearing, that's when you have to disclose that communication. So still none? Okay, seeing none. Then Jonathan, go ahead and take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and residents of Gilroy. Tonight's agenda item covers the final chapter of the weed abatement saga for 2022. Previously, at the January 24, 2022 meeting, the city approved the county's contract for weed abatement services and associated fees. At this meeting, Resolution 2022-04 was adopted by council to declare weeds a nuisance and to begin the annual weed abatement process. The weed abatement program provides weed abatement listing, notification letters, lot inspections, documentation, internet website, and arranges abatement services if needed. After the resolution was adopted, a list of lots requiring abatement was created by the county. This list includes lots that have been on the previous list that have failed inspections for the last three years, and additional lots added to the list based on non-abatement during the prior season. All owners of the lots listed were sent a weed abatement notice, information, and instruction letter packet. On April 4, 2022, a public hearing was held to allow any owner of a lot to remove their property from the program. Subsequently, Resolution 2022-18 was adopted. Excuse me. The county and I conducted inspections after May 15. Property owners were able to communicate with me directly or with the county if they had problems getting their property abated. Any lots with high weeds after the deadline were sent a notice and assessed a failed inspection fee. Within this report, there is a list of lots inspected and those assessed a failed inspection fee for those that have been abated thus far. All sites are assessed a $91 inspection fee. The site's failed inspections are assessed an additional failed inspection fee of $505. And the lots requiring abatement are assessed an additional $858 administrative fee, as well as the cost of the contractor's abatement fee. The attached staff report and spreadsheet specify the details. The good news is that there is a gradual trend of reducing the total number of properties on the abatement list. In 2016, there were 297 properties on the list, and for 2022, there are 117 properties. The property owners listed for fee assessment were sent a copy of the proposed assessment against their property in July. They have been given an opportunity to call, email, or meet with the county weed abatement program, Mo Cumery, or myself, to discuss, object, or obtain additional information about their assessment. Any property owner that did not raise objection or did not provide a substantial reason why they should not be assessed still has another opportunity to raise objections. In conclusion, it is recommended that council adopt a resolution allowing the assessment of fees minus any qualifying objections as reported by the Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program. Brenda Petroni from the Weed Abatement Program and I are available if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions from council?
Mayor, I have a question.
I see, on the board. Thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Mr. Pirt, thank you for your report. Just a quick question. In the listing, in the spreadsheet, you have several addresses that come under, no, with no physical address on here. I'm not sure if.
Some properties don't have addresses yet, so they may have, it just may be a vacant, undeveloped parcel.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Armandares?
Thank you, Mayor. I've noticed that there are a number of investment companies with five or 10 properties here, and I'm wondering if you've seen any best practices on how to hold them accountable, right? Because many of them are out-of-state investors or folks who don't live in the community. And to me, it feels like they'd be less bought in, less likely to comply, and have more resources, right, to pay versus an individual family or, you know, senior citizen who owns a property and just, you know, the weeds got away from them. So I'm wondering, have you seen any language that we could possibly implement that escalates based on the number of properties that they own and have neglected?
Well, within the Senate Clara County Weed Abatement Program, actually, you've identified a problem that I've noticed also. We have absentee investors that don't maintain their properties on time. Or if they do, they rely on the Weed Abatement Program, which has to cut many thousands of properties in the county. So it might be July or August by the time they get cut. So as of this time, I don't have an exact solution to that, but we can work together to brainstorm some creative solutions.
Yeah.
Right now, we have to follow the legal process as outlined through the Weed Abatement Program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question, Jonathan. Why, the numbers, the dollar amounts, are these this year's assessment alone, or are some of these things cumulative?
The dollar amounts generally fall into three categories. There's a basic $91 fee, and that is the inspection fee. And then you'll see some other ones that are around $500.
Right. So how does one get to $9,000?
$9,000 would probably be a large property. You know, this, I don't, oh, this one is from, this is the previous year.
That's what I was asking. So this is cumulative?
Yes, it is cumulative.
Oh, it's cumulative. Got it.
In that particular case, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I've noticed that some of the prices have actually gone down, even though they're still in the thousands.
Yeah, no, no.
The highest I've seen is thirty.
You've answered my question, and I do believe it is the latter of your explanation earlier, that it's those just rely on the abatement program instead of getting around to do it, and then it takes longer to get it done, and then they pay for it by attachment as a lien on their property.
Other cities in the county do have abatement in March. I don't really like that idea, but want to brainstorm all possibilities, perhaps.
Yeah, I know. That one's hard, because it's still raining sometimes.
Right. You get regrowth.
Yeah, it doesn't help. Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:44 and ask if we have any comments.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I'm closing the public hearing also at 6:44, and looking for possible action from the council. Motion to adopt a resolution, or?
So move, Mayor?
Oh.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Braco. Oh.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, item 9.2. This is a tentative map planned unit development zoning amendment. An architectural and site review permit for a four-unit townhome development on Gurry's Drive.
Okay, just give me a second here.
Okay, that's okay. The first thing I'm going to ask of council members is any ex parte communications? Okay, so would this, wouldn't ex parte communications include responding to comments on social media on this item?
They're all.
Does that not count as ex parte communication?
Ex parte communications could be by any means, could be a person, by telephone, social media, et cetera, any method of communication would be counted.
Okay, so then does someone want to disclose this ex parte communications on this item? Councilmember Hilton? You have responses to it on social media from people asking questions?
I haven't gained any knowledge that nobody else has gained based on this report.
Okay, so it's only if certain knowledge is gained that you're supposed to disclose it, or do you disclose it either way? I'm trying to understand. Randy, what is?
The general rule is that council members normally disclose the existence of ex parte communications and then add either that they learned something that through the ex parte communication, which should then be shared with the council, or that they did not, in which case, no sharing is required.
Okay, so in the future, if you've had any communication with anybody on an agenda item that asks for ex parte communications, please do disclose that in whatever form you had it, even if there's later than nothing to share. Okay. Cindy, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Good evening. The application before you is a four-unit townhome development project on Gurry's Drive. It's located in the medium-density residential land use designation and complies the existing planned unit development surrounding it. The PUD amendment is required to allow reduced setbacks, as shown here and in your present, in your staff report. This project complies with all other development standards, complies with our multifamily objective design standards, and is consistent with our general plan. The applicant is also offering to donate $4,000 towards the art fund and is providing a bicycle rack in the guest parking lot. You can see the townhome site plan here with private rear yards and front yard landscaping. And you can see the illustrations of the front of the home, townhome development, side and rear, as well as the color palette. With that, staff is recommending that the council waive the further reading of the ordinance, introduce the ordinance, and adopt resolutions approving the tentative map and the architectural and site review permit. This concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Okay, council members, if you have questions, please line up on the board before I go to public comment. All right, seeing none. Then, thank you. I will open public comment at 6:48, public hearing. Any comments on this item?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Are you wanting to speak?
I can't present the design of the project.
I know who you are. Okay. Okay, so we have, do you want him to fill out a card?
Later.
Okay, Mike, can you please fill out a card after you're done? Okay, so, very good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council people. It is great to be here before all of you tonight, actually in person, not on a Zoom. We've had the wonderful pleasure of presenting this project to you, the beginning of the project in 2006, so we're involved with that design as well, and we are wanting to finish off that corner. So we're providing four units in a one building, two stories, varying architecture in terms of across the front to match what's out there. We're also involved in the project that's just the east of this as well, and we'll be finishing off the sidewalks in that area and just clean that whole corner up. I'm really here for any questions that you may have. Cindy's done a great job in terms of, we're offering $4,000 to the art fund, a bicycle rack for the Bicycle Advisory Committee as well, roughly five to seven bicycles on that. And I'm here for any questions you may have about the project or the previous project.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other speakers?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so at 6:49, closing public hearing, and now goes to council. Okay, so Councilmember Hilton, you have a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Cindy, the only question I have is that the bike rack that got added, is that, does that need to be claimed on the conditions, or just because it's written in on the map, is that good enough?
It's a voluntary rack, and so it is shown on the site plan. It's a voluntary rack, and so it is shown on the site plan, and when we do our site inspection, we'll be looking for that.
The only thing that I would ask is that you just work with our city engineer and not put in the wave rack that you mentioned on there, just because that's not our standard anymore, but the, I know, but they're just not efficient at all. The city engineer, though, has all the information. It'd be an inverted U-rack is what, sort of what our standard is, and you can fit more on there, and it doesn't take as much space up either. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then, would anyone like to make a motion? We have, first would be a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
I'll second.
Okay, that was a motion by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Marks. And Ty, you need to read it?
I need to make the, count the votes first, please.
You need to vote on the motion.
We vote on it first.
It does not have to be a roll call, though.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, and that passed unanimously, I believe. I don't see it on the board, but yeah, it was unanimous. Okay, then, need a motion to introduce an ordinance of...
Madam Mayor, I need to read it.
Now you have to read it.
In ordinance of the city council of the City of Gilroy approving a planned unit development zoning amendment Z-21-04 for property located on Gurry's Drive, APN 790-35-038, 038 and 054.
Here, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, that was going to be got Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Marks.
Armendaras.
Oh, Armendaras, sorry.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that's also unanimous. We are on B or C now? Okay, we need, I need a motion to adopt a resolution approving a tentative map to adjust the lot lines and subdivide three parcels on Gurry's Drive.
So moved.
Okay, into a total of four parcels. Okay, that was moved by Councilmember Armendaras and seconded by Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, that's also unanimous. And lastly, need a motion to adopt a resolution approving an ARK and site review permit to allow construction of four townhomes on the subject property following approval, yeah, the PUD, right? Moved by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, so that's also unanimous. All right, 9.3. This is approval of a zoning amendment and tentative map for 700 West Sixth Street Residential Subdivision Project. And first, again, is disclosure of any ex parte communication. So again, if you've had contact with any of the residents, and it's just for transparency, it's not what you said, unless you learned something, it's that you spoke with anybody related to this item. Anyone?
Yes. I spoke to residents.
Okay, is that enough, Andy, just to say that?
Current residents.
As we said, yes, as I said earlier, having disclosed the communication, if new, if any information was learned, that is not part of the public record, that should be shared with the council.
Right, but do we have to disclose the names of who we spoke to?
No.
Okay, okay. Then I too spoke with, I communicated by email with one resident, and I had a phone call with another. Okay, and Councilmember Hilton, again, you don't want to, okay, because you had several on your Facebook page with people specifically on this.
I didn't gain any knowledge about this.
Right, but Andy just told us that we're supposed to disclose that we had conversations. That's what the people need to hear. Okay, go ahead, Craig.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Tonight before you, as a request for approval of a subdivision and rezoning on a property at Sixth and Prince Valley, or Prince Vale, I'm getting messy. This property is currently developed with an office complex, and it was rezoned with a general plan 2020 to single-family residential. So we had a developer come in that wanted to do a very nice project in town, came forward with a set of plans, we reviewed those, and we believe we have presented before you a good project to infill that site. So the request is to approve the zoning amendment to match our general plan and to approve the subdivision compliant with the R1 zoning and the single-family land use designation. So this location map just shows you generally where we are, Prince Vale and West Sixth Street. Again, a former, or a current office, medical office park near what was formerly a hospital on the opposite corner. Again, this layout just shows you the existing development, so the site is currently fully developed with the office park, and it would be redeveloped to match our general plan with the residential subdivision. This subdivision layout is complementary to the neighborhood and fully implements the general plan land use designation. In addition, they've opted to put in a private road, so that takes off that maintenance obligation of the city, and will put that on the homeowners for this, a court partial. They'll fully improve Sixth Street and Prince Vale along its other furnages, replacing the street trees, and they will provide all other stormwater treatment on-site. So this project actually takes a lot of the public burden and takes care of it on-site, so we're very happy about the applicant working with us on that. And so again, the project complies with all our general plan policies, all of our zoning policies. It qualifies for an exemption as infill, it's under five acres, previously developed, has no special or unique circumstances on the property, does not trigger further environmental review for the 19-lot development, and planning commissions reviewed and recommended this project to the city council with conditions. At that time, they did hear public comment. You've received additional comments tonight from the two, two of the same individuals who provided comment at the last meeting, so that's in your packet. And then we received, in addition to that, three additional comments on top of the repeated comments from the neighbor and from the bicycle advocacy group. The three additional comments that were provided mainly are focusing on a request to upzone the site, which isn't something that currently is before you, but that, I just wanted to know that that's the content of those other comments. And so again, similar with the prior project, you would have three motions to take for this project. One is to introduce the project, a motion to read the project by title only, waive further reading. The second would be to introduce the ordinance to rezon the site, and the third would be to adopt the resolution approving the tentative map. And the one last thing I'd just like to note is after this action were taken, we'd have a second reading, and then after that, staff would take action. They've actually applied for design review for all of the homes on the property. That's an administrative action, and that, those home designs were in your packets, you have an idea of what they're proposing. The purpose of that review is to make sure that there's a variety of homes on the lot and that they all don't repeat, so we feel, we feel that their designs are very well-conceived. And that concludes my presentation, and I believe the applicants here as well, if you want to hear from them after I'm done speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Do you want to speak, or do you want to wait? Okay, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Blankley, members of the Gilroy City Council. I'm Adam Peterson. I'm the Director of Community Development with Warmington Residential. I'd like to begin tonight by thanking staff and thanking the city's decision-makers for the hard work that they put in on this project. Warmington is a small, family-owned business that's been building homes since 1926. Consistent with that legacy, we are proposing to redevelop an underutilized office site in the City of Gilroy with 19 single-family homes. Additional improvements to the site include enhanced landscaping with a landscape buffer that varies in width between 14 to 26 feet at the south end of the site with the pedestrian pathway, as well as bicycle and pedestrian improvements along West Sixth Street and Prince Vale. As staff noted, to facilitate the project, the proposal includes a change in the zoning map to bring the site into consistency with the city's general plan. We've worked with city staff to design a project that's consistent with the city's general plan. This includes the density anticipated in the land use element, as well as a project that's consistent with the goals and policies and the mobility element, the housing element, as well as the public facilities and services element. As staff know, the project's consistent with the municipal code related to architectural and site review requirements, and the project is additionally conditioned to mitigate and reduce impacts from noise and dust. As staff know, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the zoning map amendment, and on a six-to-one vote, recommended approval of the tentative map with a lone dissenting vote regarding a gate along the pedestrian path at the south end of the site. Warmington is aware of the public comments following the planning commission meeting, and I reached out to property owners to listen to these concerns regarding the project. Ultimately, we believe that the city's responses and the project satisfies these concerns, and given this, we would request that the city council introduce and approve the ordinance rezoning the site and adopt a resolution approving the tentative map. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into questions, I'd like to address whether or not anyone needs to recuse themselves from this. When anyone states their position on, so from a July 2nd, right, Facebook post, we had a council member who disclosed his position on these items, and whether someone is for or against something must be derived through deliberation in a publicly noticed forum such as this, so that all have the opportunity to witness and comment before a voting member's mind is made up. So I'm going to ask our city attorney to please address this so that we all understand it's a learning experience for all of us, social media is still fairly new, and he can explain why that does or does not require that person to recuse themselves.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recusal is required if someone has become an advocate for or against the project, in essence. And this is not a well-defined bright line. There are cases, there are court cases where council members have had to recuse themselves or where, let's say, an approval or a denial has been overturned because in a lawsuit, the allegation has been made that the council member was biased. The bias applies particularly the issue to quasi-administrative actions, which are, for example, the subdivision map. It does not apply as strongly to legislative actions like rezoning or general plan, but it does apply to administrative actions like subdivisions, maps, use permits, ARK and site, where findings have to be made based on evidence at a hearing. So I think in any, in any case in which a council member has taken an advocacy position, spoken out, they have to consider whether they have gone too far and become either an advocate for or against the project. Merely speaking out and saying something is a good project or perhaps a bad project probably does not reach the level of where recusal is required, and it would depend on the fact in each case. The cases in the court system are generally pretty egregious cases where council members have taken overt actions one way or the other on a project.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, sure.
Andy, on something like that, the council member would, could be personally sued, correct? Or could sue the city too? It's unlikely that a council member would be personally sued. It's more likely that either an applicant on a project that was denied would file a lawsuit against the city claiming that the action was improper, or that an opponent of a project that was approved would argue that the vote was tainted in some respect.
Okay, so thank you for that explanation. It is, it is so easy to get involved in these things in social media, and the public wants to ask questions, and you want your council member to respond, and I just want everyone to understand that this is the setting for this kind of discussion where it's been publicly noticed, not where only some people know that the discussion is happening. So it's very important to understand that distinction and to, for us as council members to realize that, and for the public to understand too. Okay? All right, so now I'm going to go to the council. You can sit down, sir, that's okay.
Thank you.
Well, if you're the one that they have a question of, then we'll ask you to come back up.
No, I do.
Oh, then never mind, stay. The question is from Councilmember Armendaras is first, all right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Peterson, Peterson, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I wanted to ask, given the state of our housing and what our city has, our council has talked about numerous times, I don't expect you to be up to date completely on that, right? But you usually know your audience when you come into a community. Why didn't you guys look, or aren't you guys proposing something more dense?
It's a good question. I think as staff noted, this project is consistent with the general plan, and so the density that's in line is basically consistent with what the city is planned for on the site. It's also consistent with the surrounding community, so it really sort of transitions well and blends in with the surrounding community. But again, I think ultimately, in the final answer, is just that this project is consistent with the density that's prescribed in the general plan that the city is planned for.
Okay, and then, second question, if I could. We received some requests from the surrounding community, from surrounding neighbors, for some mitigation, right, to the impacts it's going to have on their neighborhood, that I, to me, sounded very reasonable, not too costly, including the laurel trees, right, planting more laurel trees along the southern property line, installing a password-protected gate on the pathway on the southeast corner. And then setbacks, right, because of the increased amount of traffic, that area is already busy, and there is a lot of, there's a lot of pedestrians, a couple of schools in the area, and then the senior center at Wheeler. So I'm wondering, those things don't seem like very expensive or unreasonable requests to me, but it sounds like you all are not, don't want to adopt those.
If I, if I could, I'd like to walk through each one of those things, if I may. So number one, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to be able to work with the city and with the community related to those items. I think ultimately what happened is those items came in, they were requested. Staff did reach out to, say, Public Works and Public Safety regarding, say, the striping along either side, the court that's south of the project site, and that came back, and that was found not to be applicable to this project, that the project wasn't triggering an impact to require that for the striping. With respect to the dust that would be generated from the project, there are mitigation measures, there's conditions of approval in place that every project in the Bay Area is subject to that would suppress any dust that's generated from that. With respect to the gate, you know, this is something that the planning commission examined and discussed thoroughly, and they moved on with a recommendation, with a six-to-one recommendation to approve the project as-is. I would also note that that also included an evaluation of the landscaping, and particularly screening for privacy. I can tell you right now that there are 16 trees along the southern property line. Those 16 trees are going to grow in height from anywhere from 20 feet to 60 feet tall. If I could make a recommendation or throw out a thought or idea, what I recommend is that we combat, is that as a condition of approval, we work with city staff to maybe position those 16 trees to optimize, to optimize screening along that southern property line. But I think those, again, I think ultimately what we found is that the majority of those comments were addressed, were addressed, and that, again, we can work with city staff given the existing plans to satisfy any concerns or comments.
I mean, I understand those things probably meet code and they meet regulation, but in good faith, as good neighbors who are coming in and really changing the whole landscape of that area, right, bringing in that amount of homes and residents, I would think that as good neighbors and in good faith, you would, you would try to help the neighbors feel better about, about it and putting those things. Like I said, I think they're completely reasonable, and they don't seem to be of high cost at all, and they're things you could just do, like I said, in good faith. I would feel better about it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's okay, you've answered it. You want to answer some more?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you, Councilmember Armendaras. I think my questions may sort of be similar to her last question. I'm thinking about the traffic impact on Sixth Street, how busy it is. I live a block away from where this project will grow up. I'm concerned about sort of the safety of our seniors at the senior center and also at the Wheeler Hospital. So, you know, again, I was reading through all the, you know, all the approval lists and policies and stuff. I just, I think I just, I'm really concerned about them because I run by there every morning, and I see people walking, and yeah, we do have stop signs, but people just really go through there, so.
So to speak to those concerns?
Okay, can I, I'm sorry, can I, it's interrupt. Councilmember, do you live within 500 feet of this project?
No, no.
That's what we're all wondering.
Yeah, no, 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 I live on Fifth and Dowdy, so.
Do we know if that's within 500 feet?
No, that's...
Not Fifth, not Fifth and Dowdy.
Thank you for asking. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, then go ahead.
I run 500 feet, but I...
Yeah, no, I just... All right.
So. To speak to the concerns about increased traffic. So if this project, or if this project were not to go forward, you were to have a fully leased-up office center, not even a fully leased-up office center, you're going to generate fully leased up office center, you're going to generate far more traffic than if you had these homes right there as is right now. So number one, this project actually is going to reduce traffic in the area. Number two, we're also include we're also enhancing basically the crosswalks and the pedestrian bulbous at that intersection of West Sixth Street and Prince Valley. And so that's going to promote pedestrian safety. We're also going to realign the sidewalk along Prince Valley. Right now, you have this little jog out. It's going to be straight in line. So it's just going to be a straight shot up to any sort of pedestrian crosswalk or any pedestrian pathway.
No, and thank you for that. And when we talk about sort of street markings, you know, I mean, obviously, like in some of our areas, we have the lights that, you know, when you cross the street, the light up, you know. I don't know if that's an option that we're, you know, that you're thinking about. I I'm just really concerned about, you know, our seniors that walk by their lot, so. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, I have a question for staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I'm not good at reading lips. Councilmember La Romano just has a follow-up question. Do you mind if I let him just go?
I apologize. I'm not very good at charades.
And I can't read lips.
Mr. Peterson, so yeah, just again, I think a lot of us have that concern with regard to the traffic kind of in there and recognizing that it is a very, you know, heavily trafficked, you know, pedestrian zone. Can you just speak a little bit more about some of the improvements that you were looking and just a little bit more in depth? You mentioned the bulb out and and some of the other changes to the sidewalk. If you just give a few more details, that'd be helpful.
Yeah. So the site plan on your screen, it actually it it actually doesn't show the full the full depth of those improvements. So what it shows though is the typical improvements that you're going to see on the site. I'll start with Prince Valley, Prince Valley, the street running, I guess, horizontal or or sorry, vertical on the on the screen here. And ultimately, what it's going to do is it's basically going to realign Prince Valley to make it one continuous street. So you're going to have a dedicated five-foot wide bike lane. You're going to have parking. No problem. You're going to have you're going to have an adequate but what I'm going to get to is that you're going to have an adequate buffer along Prince Valley about Prince Valley between any pedestrian walking along the sidewalk and basically any sort of street traffic, because it's going to basically give a sidewalk, a parking lane, and then a five-foot dedicated bike lane. And again, that's an improvement that's consistent with the general plan. I believe it's striped now, but again, it's going to it's going to realign it and it's going to fully implement the general plan, the mobility element. Moving up Prince Valley towards the top of the image, again, what you're seeing is basically one corner of the enhanced pedestrian crosswalks. You're going to see a crosswalk that gives adequate shelter to pedestrians as they go either north on Prince Valley or as they go to the east along West Sixth Street towards City Hall. We're going to have we're going to have restriped, basically restriped crosswalks and improvements there. And I would also say that the same improvement that you're going to see on Prince Valley, giving that pedestrian buffer, is going to happen with the with the sidewalks along West Sixth Street as well. Those sidewalks are going to be buffered also along West Sixth Street. I would say there's going to be also an enhanced buffer because there's going to be street trees along that area. And I think one of the big things is that, you know, the majority of this project is going to exit from the private court. You know, you're not going to have a large number of vehicle trips that are generated that are, you know, you know, that are exiting close to, you know, the court immediately to the south of the site. So.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
How many units could be put on this parcel?
So I I believe it's 3.9 acres. They're doing a 6.1 density. It's eight, three to eight units per acre. So you could do, I guess that's close to 30, 28, 30. My math off the cuff is not the best.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
I think you already answered my question. So you are going to make Prince Valley a straight through. You're taking out that cement block that they have there at the south end?
Yeah, at the south end. Yeah, there's a little there's a jog in the sidewalk on Prince Valley. And so it's going to be aligned consistent with the street.
All right, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for staff. So the one of the neighbors had asked about the red zone, right, down at Georgetown? And you're saying that that are you saying that that's not a part of this project? I'm looking at the gray grayout map, this one right here. If you all the way down to the bottom, you can see where the where the like sphere comes down there. I think what they're concerned about is maybe overflow parking or eventual parking down there. And as you know about that that whole vision of nosing all the way out there, we, you know.
Yeah, I believe that would be the concern. I might call on my my colleague here from Public Works, but I did talk with Gary Heap about that. And he says that's outside the scope of this project. It's something that the city would look at. If that needs to be done, we'd stripe it, we'd paint the curb. That's my understanding. If you want to hear further, I believe Darrell can speak to that.
Councilman Hilton, it would be independent of this project, but we would go out and evaluate the vision triangle. And if it doesn't warrant it, we'd put that in for you.
Yeah, because I think that I think that was their concern is more more cars, more people. Maybe it's just a neighbor or a guest that's staying there and they're using that parking spot. And we're going to end up with that same exact situation on Fifth and Church, right? Where you got to know, even in a SUV, you got to nose all the way out there.
If this is approved, we'll put on a list to evaluate.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other. Council Councilmember Bracco, are you still? Nope. Okay. So with that, then I will go to the public and open the public hearing at 7:15 and ask if we have any speaker cards.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have three speaker cards. The first one is Mark Ziegler, followed by Crystal Morley, followed by Matt Morley.
Okay, if all of you could please come forward, you have three minutes each. But if you could please all take a seat in the front row.
Good evening, Councilpeople. My name is Mark Ziegler, and I live at 711 Georgetown Place, right behind the development. I also was at the Planning Commission meeting last week, I think it was. And I brought up basically two two things. One was the time of operation. I live right there and I'm retired. And already, we have all kinds of things waking us up between gardeners and everything else. I don't want to see heavy equipment moving or making noise before 8 o'clock. I don't know. I think the rule says seven or 7:30.
Seven.
But if we could have just a variant for just this particular thing, because I can just see it, we're going to be living with this thing for about a year. And I was just hoping that something can be done to eliminate the noise. The other thing is a was I brought up is parcel B is right behind us, and there's a walkway in that area. I was hoping that we could get a lockable gate on the Prince Valley side. It could be a combination lock, something that that people can use that own the buildings there that can get in and out. But it keeps somewhat the public from using that as a public access. Those are the two things I'm I'm really interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Crystal Morley, followed by Matt Morley.
Hi, I'm going to take just a little bit bit out of out of order and probably get you back three minutes. I'm Matt Morley. I'm here with my parents, Crystal and Glenn. We've lived in Gilroy for for a long time, many years. And my parents have owned the house on Georgetown for 30 years. So they're they're right there. We've been active members of the community. My my mother's been a teacher in in town, retired from Gilroy Unified. My father's been a small business owner. So we we're we're connected to the to the to Gilroy. We've had an opportunity to talk to the developer. We we did sit down with Mr. Peterson and had a nice phone call. The the perspective we got out of that conversation was a little bit different. We we heard from him that the changes that we're asking for are reasonable and and modest in nature. And so we were hopeful that there would be something that he would be supportive of. As you know, we sent you several emails. You have an outline of of what we're looking for. The council does have the ability to condition the project, as you know, and you also have the ability to add the red curb on Prince Valley. That's not an unreasonable request. You know, your questions today have talked to the traffic levels. So making the jump to that being a way to alleviate some of the traffic burden on Georgetown and Prince Valley is certainly an easy thing for you to to make a finding of. And with that, just to reiterate in what we called for in in our email, the four items that we're asking for is to work with the neighbors in the southerly property line to place an additional nine laurel trees. Laurel trees are modest in size and they're easy to place. So we're just asking for nine nine trees to help to add additional screening. To install the gate, there's precedent in the gate for the gate in town on Cougar Court over by Christopher High School. So similar to that, where you have a coded gate that allows folks to get through through one way, free access egress from from the space. To provide the red curb that I talked about at Prince Valley and to mitigate the disruption for the neighbors with quarterly window cleaning. You know, you you've you've seen some of the residents in the area. My parents are certainly elderly. In their younger days, they they climb up to the second floor and wash the outside windows. But that's just not something that's reasonable at this point. The the project will will definitely create a bit of a dilemma for them in their back using their backyard with all the construction. So we think that's a modest add. So our request for you tonight is that you include these conditions in your motion so that they become part of the project going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
That would be Crystal Morley.
Hi, I'm Crystal Morley. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I just want to say that you've heard from our son, Matt, who very nicely presented the issues that we have. Basically, the overview is we're looking for privacy and safety. The privacy is we purchased our house 30 years ago with behind a a small medical center, which, you know, it doesn't look small, but it was small. There was never a lot of traffic. So maintaining that privacy is really important to us. And and therein lies the request for extra trees. Mr. Peterson has been great in, you know, talking to us. And as Matt said, we thought that Wilmington approved of the requests we had. Not sure what happened there. It's easy to come in from outside and look at pictures and, you know, decide what's reasonable. It's a whole lot different when you live there. So, you know, the extra trees isn't a lot, but it would help prevent the noise from 19 new homes. The second thing is the safety, which the end of Georgetown, even once you take away that extra little loop there, it's hard to get out. This morning I drove out, there was a car on the corner of Georgetown and Prince Valley. I had to go out there bit by bit and then slam on my brakes because the car was coming. You can't see it. So the red curbs is a safety issue. The second safety issue is we have we have a second story home. It's the only one that overlooks the medical center, but I see all kinds of people that don't belong that go there. And, you know, Mark, who spoke just a few minutes ago, is right. People will use this as a shortcut to go through. If we can have a gate there, as an HOA might have, that would prevent people from cutting through. It would prevent people also from using Georgetown as extra parking. So those are some of our concerns. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Do we have any other speaker cards?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I'm closing the public hearing at 7:22. And I'm going to come back to council. I know I have a question, whether or not others may have gotten theirs asked already. So I'm I'm going to start. Councilmember Marks, if that's okay, since I haven't asked anything yet.
Mr. Peterson, I'd like you to come back. I have a question for you.
Okay, I thought I was just going to start. Okay.
Oh, did you say you were in start?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. But it could it could be for Mr. Peterson, too. I don't know. I just wanted to ask about the on the map, on the on the very bottom, right, where where people could get in through through the back, where would be the is that an exit? There's no exit point, is there?
This is a pedestrian pathway that ties into the sidewalk.
That ties into?
Yeah, this sidewalk comes here. You can see where the mouse is.
Wait, I can't see.
Just a second.
Oh, I'll look here. Okay, sorry. Do it again?
Here we go.
Right? Comes in there and goes where?
So this is the pedestrian, this is the sidewalk.
Right.
Here.
Yes.
And then this leads to the pedestrian pathway.
That but where does the pedestrian pathway ultimately go?
It ultimately concludes here at the court.
Inside the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay. So cutting through, what is the purpose of that walkway?
The purpose of the walkway is to connect basically the interior units of the cul-de-sac with Prince Valley.
Okay.
So that would avoid, you know, if these if the if the residents, say, in plot, you know, units five, six, seven, or eight, or or any of them wanted to come out to Prince Valley or come into their units from Prince Valley, that they could.
On foot?
Yeah, on foot, do it this way rather than walking around the site.
Okay. This this is not a homeowners association, though, right? Or is it?
This is homeowners.
It is a homeowners association. Oh, so is there a reason why the gate is something that is not? What what is your position on a gate there? How do you feel? I I watched the Planning Commission meeting, so I heard what was said there, but I'm just curious as to what the does it? Is it because? Why?
Again, I think we're amenable to what the city would require of us.
No, I know it's not required. It's an ask. And so the question is, what's your what would be your reason for not doing it or for doing it? Is it purely a cost thing for just a gate or?
I think it would be in aesthetics in terms of how that ties into the rest of the streetscape. The streetscape is pretty uniform here in what you're in what you're looking at. Now you have single-family homes and then you just have a a gate immediately adjacent to somebody's, you know, to somebody's yard. I'm not sure how that aesthetic would work and what that would look like for for a homeowner living there. I think you're also looking at maintenance issues that would be associated with that gate.
Yes, there would.
Management of the code.
Right. Okay. And in the end, it's just residents can walk there and anybody else can walk through there, too, because this is not a gated community?
Correct. It is not.
Right. It's not. It's not a gated community. It's just a community. Okay. And with respect to the trees, I know that you said there's 16 trees.
Correct.
Are those 16 meant to be just along the Georgetown back line or is it in the entire development?
No, those 16 trees are along the entire back line. Ultimately, the the project would include, just a second. The project would plant 47 trees on the site.
Okay, and 16 of them, though, are just on this back line. And they're large trees. You said they could grow to fit. I mean, I'm familiar with large trees. I've got way too many of them. Yeah. So, okay. So that's the tree thing. And then the curb painting, we've already addressed, right? That's what.
That's the Public Works.
Exactly. Public Works said that they will look at right away when this is done. Okay. Okay. So thank you. That answers that answers my questions. All right. Councilmember Marks.
Yes, those are the exact three things that I'm concerned about. But I want to go a little bit further because I yes, you need to stay there. I'm a little concerned about and maybe the Morleys need to clarify the nine trees, because if you're saying 16 go along that walkway, do you mean nine more trees or you want nine, so 25 in total? So.
Yeah, let's not have communication with.
Okay. So footagewise, how far apart if they if you were to put in 25 trees?
Right.
How close would they be?
We'd have to work with our landscape architect on that. But that's a that's something that we could work out through the, I guess, through the post-approval process as we go through issue issue building permits for the site and for the project. We could go through, we could figure out more adequate spacing for additional trees. The number, I don't I can't speak to the exact number. I think 25 would be a lot.
I think it would, too.
Yeah. But yeah, but I mean, we could we could certainly add, you know, a few more trees to the rear property line to enhance privacy and screening.
And I know Public Works is going to look at the red curb, but look at and say they're going to do it are two different things. I'm a little uncomfortable with giving agreement right now because I thought I I just kind of thought everyone was working together a little bit more than what I'm hearing. And I would feel much more comfortable if I was getting some more assurances that the neighbors on Georgetown were going to be getting more of their wishes. The gate, it's an HOA. So you're saying, well, it's a maintenance thing, but the HOA would pay for any maintenance. I mean, once you sign off on the project, you're basically done. And the HOA, the residents take over all of this, correct? So is it really a hardship to go ahead and put in a lot to gate? Because I do understand their concerns. They are going to have people walking through behind their houses, taking the shortcut down through the cul-de-sac and out to Sixth Street and.
Again, I think ultimately, it's an aesthetic issue and it's a design issue about whether, you know, whether a gate at that location would be consistent with the design theme along Prince Valley. You know, we have residential properties that would front that street with ingresses and egresses from the homes. It's, you know, it's sort of, you know, whether or not that really makes sense to have that on Lot 19. But again, it's 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 ultimately, I think, the city's decision. But again, I think it's a design issue, design consideration.
I just have some concerns, yes, right now.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes. Aesthetics, it it comes down to money. That's what it is. I I think that this gate, the future residents would thank us for putting that gate in. Because you look at it and people are going to be, it's going to be a highway there after school, kids cutting through there and stuff. So I I don't think what the residents are asking for is too much. And if nobody else is wants to speak, I'm ready to make a motion to approve it with. if nobody else is, wants to speak, I'm ready to make a motion to approve it with, uh-
Conditions?
The conditions.
Uh, which, you want to state the conditions you're referring to?
The conditions, uh, well, there was the eight AM start time, the gate, the trees, and then the city's looking into the red curb, so-
I don't think, can we, yeah, I'd rather speak to the eight AM start time. We can't make special things like that.
Yeah, I'll defer to community development about the eight AM. I would be, I would caution council about requiring-
Yeah.
A red curb. Uh, we will evaluate, and if we can justify it, we'll put it in, but we just don't want to make you a promise that we can-
I said that you're gonna evaluate it.
Mayor, I'm gonna second that motion.
Okay, so the motion is to evaluate for a red, a red curb. Are you removing the eight AM start time, or you're keeping that in there?
Can we put that in, Andy?
That's-
Or Jimmy?
I don't think you want to start that.
It would be varying a general city ordinance, wouldn't it, Jimmy?
Two or seven.
Yeah. Which normally we, we don't do for individual projects.
Right.
Yeah. And this is a tentative map approval, not the, not, this is a straight zoning, not a planned unit development zoning.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so the motion, the motion, the condition of the motions is to evaluate red curb to, what, to look into adding trees, or what?
Put a gate?
Put a gate.
And add trees, um, consistent with staff's decision on how many. Because too many trees isn't good either.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Do we need to specify that the gate has a code? Do you want to specify that, or just, because a gate-
Well, yeah, it needs to have a code, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so a password-protected code.
Right. Okay, and Councilmember Tovar, are you second to that? Craig, do you want to make any comments?
No comments per se, but I believe that would go with, uh, conditions when you get to the tentative map, that's when we'd add that in.
In other words, we actually have a motion to read the ordinance for the rezoning first by title and waive further reading, then a separate motion to adopt the ordinance, then the resolution to approve the tentative map is where the conditions would come in.
Okay, so these conditions would come under Part C? Okay, so do I have a motion for Part A?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, A is moved by Councilmember Armendaris and seconded by Councilmember Tovar. Uh, motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. Yes. Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar? And Mayor Blankley. Yes, and that passes unanimously.
An ordinance-
Yes.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gilroy approving a zoning map amendment, Z twenty-two dash zero-one for property located on seven hundred West Sixth Street, APN seven-nine-nine dash two-six-zero-three-three, zero-three-seven, zero-four-nine, zero-five-zero, zero-five-one, and fifty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, again, that's made by Councilmember Armendaris and seconded by Councilmember Tovar. That's also a roll call vote, I believe. Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley. Yes, and that's unanimous. Okay, so now, before we get to C, is there anything else that staff needs to say before we get to C?
Uh, no, no, there's nothing more. I'm happy to help you work on a condition, but-
Okay, so let's give that a try then. Councilmember Barco, do you want to?
I'll make the same motion I made before with, uh, the gate, the trees, and- for staff, and they're gonna look at the curb.
I'll second. Go ahead, do you want to ask for clarity?
Sure, sure, I might offer, offer, um, that, well, first of all, the, the red curb would be just direction to staff to look at that.
To evaluate it.
Yeah, would, if, I, I would recommend that doesn't need to be a condition, but if you want-
It's not a condition.
Okay, so with respect to the gate and the trees, I would recommend that perhaps that the condition just read, the, uh, add a condition that the applicant work with staff to, uh, install, uh, to work on placement of a gate, uh, with a secured access code along that walkway, and that the applicant work with staff to arrange placement of trees to provide for the privacy of, of the affected neighbors.
For further, for further privacy.
Further privacy.
Further privacy.
Uh, to add up to nine additional trees.
Right.
And then what we would do is work with, I would expect to work with, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Morley to, to look at some placement issues, any other neighbors, and then come up with a final plan prior to, uh, approval. And I would know that we can address that with the architectural insight review of the homes as well. So that is a subsequent action that I'll have to take, and I'm happy to work with everyone at that time prior to taking that staff action. So we could add a condition to that, and council can just, in their condition, say, we want to see that issue addressed with this, with this map approval.
Sounds good. Okay, that does sound good, and you'll, yeah, look at the trees. We don't want trees going into sewer lines either. I mean, there's all those things to look at with trees, they're not just pretty. They have things, okay.
Right.
I know. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Barco, and it was seconded by Councilmember Marx. Uh, and you have a comment?
Yeah, no, I was actually the second, um, I, the original motion that Councilmember Barco-
Oh, you want to be in the second position?
That, that's-
Is that okay? Well, I just didn't know, I thought, when, uh, Councilmember Barco-
No, just making sure that we're, yeah, I'm just making sure. That's fine, and either way, it doesn't matter, I just want to make sure.
All right. Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley. Yes, and that passes unanimously as well. Okay, item eleven. Eleven point one, to be specific, selection of designated voting delegate and alternate voting delegate for the League of California Cities Twenty Twenty-Two Annual Conference. Ty is going to give us a brief report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The League of Cal- City, uh, California Cities Annual Conference requires a voting delegate along with two voting delegates, alternates at the next month's annual conference in consideration of resolutions that establish the league's policy being held on Friday, September ninth. Councilmember Tovar and Mayor Blankley are the two that are scheduled to attend the meeting. The resolution packet will be provided, uh, to council at August fifteenth city council meeting.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, um, before we go to, uh, public comment, do we have any public comment? I'm gonna ask that now, because I'm guessing no.
I received no, um, public speakers for this.
Okay, so closing public comment, and I would like to suggest that Councilmember Tovar be the, uh, main voting delegate, and I be the alternate, but you guys can do whatever you wish, but that would be my suggestion, just to make it easy.
No, thank you, Mayor, and if, if it's so approved, I'll do what I did last year, obviously, come back and report to the full council.
Yeah, well, I think, I, did you say that, that, so the, the actual things that you're gonna be voting on will be coming back to council before the, and you'll be directed how to vote?
Right. No, 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 that, no, I'm saying in addition to that, other, other information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So I, I would move the, the recommendation that Councilmember Tovar is our primary voter, and then, uh, Mayor Blankley is our secondary voter.
Okay.
Thank you.
So everybody can do digital voting on that?
Is there a second?
Oh.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought we had that.
Yeah, I know.
No, I know, I get it stolen from me. It says waiting on Rebecca Armendaris. Is she not here?
Is she with?
Oh, okay, well, that's six, then.
No, she's coming, she's coming.
Oh. Coming where?
Well, she's walking. She's coming through that door any second.
All right.
I think we just move on, don't we?
Right, right there.
Yeah, okay, it passed. Okay, so on to eleven point two. Uh, clarification and potential amendment to attendance policy for city boards, commissions, and committees.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm going to the podium here.
Okay, very good.
I used to fit through there. Used to.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is, uh, item eleven point two, the clarification and potential amendment to attendance policy for the city boards, commissions, and committees. Uh, give you a brief background. On September tenth, twenty eighteen, the city council, uh, adopted Resolution Twenty Eighteen dash forty-one, an attendance policy to institute standards for all boards, commissions, and committees. Since the creation of the policy, there have been several occasions in which staff needed clarification from the city clerk's office and along with the city attorney's office. At the current attendance policy, we have created four types of absences. Uh, the four are defined there with excuse absences as an absence that is reported to the staff liaison on the body no less than seventy-two hours before the regular meeting. Any other absences shall not be deemed an excused absence. Emergency absences are defined as a cause by an accident emergency, including but not limited to the illness, hospitalization, or an accident of the member, the member's parent, spouse, or domestic partner or dependent. Followed by allowed absences, which each member of the body shall be allowed two excused absences and one emergency absence from a regular meetings per calendar year. Finally, which was the unexcused absences, which is any absences from a regular meeting in excess of the two excused absences and one emergency absence in a calendar year shall be deemed unexcused. A member with an unexcused absence shall be removed from their seat. Also, in, inclusive with this, uh, attendance policy, there's a statement that basically states, if a member exceeds the attendance standards and absents themselves from more than three regular meetings as described above, or absents themselves from three consecutive meet, regular meetings without permission of such body, his or her office shall become vacant and shall be declared so by the city council. And that three consecutive regular meetings comes from the city charter itself. With the issues of the current language, um, with the confusion from staff and from the body, is that members have absences that were not notified to the staff liaison, a member that has three excused absences but no emergency absences, a member has absences that are not consecutive to the meeting, it's, um, to the, uh, bodies of the meeting, and the bodies that do not meet monthly. Uh, this is a common example with the open government commission, which only meets quarterly, so there's only four meetings. So in theory, there could be a possible of meeting half the meetings and not being removed from the meeting itself. And along with the youth commission, which actually only meets, uh, eight meetings total for the calendar year. Staff is recommending that we redefine, um, the definitions of absence, which is basically the failure of a member to attend a scheduled meeting. And in terms of the definition of absence is that each member of a body is expected to attend every regular and special meeting of the body. Any member who is absent in a calendar year for more than thirty-three percent of the regular meetings shall, scheduled to be held in a calendar year, will be subject to a potential termination of membership from the body upon action of, by the city council. Where applying a thirty-three percent calculation creates more than whole number, number rounding to the nearest whole number will be used. So this is, will be an example that will come shortly. Reporting of absences, uh, with regards to the section three, uh, absences are to be reported through to staff liaison to this body. Such reporting shall be made by email, in person, or by phone, and shall be made no less than seventy-two hours before a meeting if possible. And finally, in so, in regards to the removal, if a member exceeds the number of allowed absences as described in this policy, the city administrator shall report this fact to the city council, which may decide in discretion that such absences warrant a declaration that the member's office shall be, become vacant. With this language, this is how it affects the, uh, current bodies. Uh, since, uh, majority of the bodies actually meet monthly, uh, so there'll be four total absences before it goes to the council for, uh, for review to be removed or not. With regards to those that meet monthly, it's a two, and those with the youth commission, for example, it's eight meetings in total, so it's on to three. The new language addresses the following things. It resets the absences every calendar year from January first through December thirty-first. It creates a percentage of missed absences for regular meetings instead of the set number to make exception for committees that do not meet monthly, so for example, with the youth commission and open government commission. It also removes the term of excused, unexcused, and emergency absences, and standardizes any types of absences from a regular meeting with, will be counted. Finally, it designates the council to act in an open meeting in order to remove a member of a board, commission, and committee. Again, this does not override the city charter, which is impo, is not possible unless we have the voters decide on that itself. A member absent themselves from three consecutive regular meetings without permission of such board or commission expressed in its official minutes, their office shall become vacant at a regular meeting. So that still applies. So this is an addition to, on top of the city charter. So the recommendation is that provides policy further clarity and allows for absences based on percentage per calendar year and creates specific steps in reporting absences. This policy will be implemented uniformly for all boards, commissions, and committees of the city and will assist in maintaining quorum at all our meetings itself. And I'm happy to answer any of the, uh, council members' questions or concerns.
Thank you, Ty, for that report. Um, I'm gonna start by just saying that, um, that, that this, as you said, thank you for pointing out that this is in addition to what the charter says, because we don't have the authority here to do anything to the charter. And I'd like to point out for everyone that the charter says three consecutive absences of regularly scheduled meetings, and that doesn't mean in a single calendar year. It's just three consecutive absences, but it means when you, when they're, basically, when you're ghosted by a commissioner. You can have permission. It means without any contact, without any permission, without any knowledge, you've just got someone who's missed three consecutive meetings, and it could be November, December, January, that without, you don't know if the person's dead or alive. Okay, so that's, that's what the charter says, so that cannot change. What we are adding is clarification, uh, to the rest. Okay, Councilmember Armendaris.
So, um, I, I understand that we have to have, um, lang, we have to have an attendance policy, right? It makes it really hard when you're on a commission and you don't reach quorum, or, um, you have a work plan and certain members don't, don't complete that because they're out. But I think that, uh, the language that we're proposing here, um, I have a few issues with it. I think the reporting of absences, um, not allowing for medical emergencies, um, to be excused, I think that, you know, we're in a time of pandemic, and, um, where things change in a family or in a person's health, you know, from one minute to the next, I think we have to take that into consideration. I think that the removal process is, is too ambiguous. It could be subject to bias, uh, to political bias, right? Even though it has to be decided upon by the council publicly, I think that, um, that language, if we're gonna have to, if we're gonna go with, uh, a policy like this, then it has to be consistent across the board, right? Not, not, um, at the discretion of the council, because we're human beings with biases, right? But the other thing is that, uh, the large percentage of our community, uh, members and those who want to participate and should have a voice at the table are commuters, are workers, are people who are not independently wealthy or self-employed, and so they don't have control over their own schedules. And I don't think that we should create, um, more difficult barriers to them participating in, in our community and their city as they want to. And so I think policies like this, when they're, um, they could be very much discouraging to folks who, who want to participate, but they have families, but they commute, you know, and we all know the traffic from Silicon, from San Jose, it can, you know, can take an hour or more sometimes. And so, um, I'd like our language to represent, to recognize that, and also, um, understand that we have to have some equitable measures in place for, for working people, for the di, the diversity within our community. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yeah, thank you, and, and, you know, as somebody who works, you know, outside of town, believe me, I know how difficult it can be fighting the traffic to get back and not always being in charge of your own schedule. But I think nonetheless, I, I think one thing that, that is important is, at the very beginning, when we go through the interview process, that people have an opportunity to be honest with themselves and with us as well as to whether or not they'll be able to make the commitments, and we're allowing for a little bit of that flexibility. We understand things come up, medical things, I mean, I know where things come up, and I gotta, I gotta be there, and I gotta be there. So I think we built in some flexibility, uh, for all that. I, I think the proposed recommendations, to me, offer a little bit more clarity as to what we're, what we're all trying to expect out of each other, and then the public has, has an expectation as well of us. And anybody who serves on these boards and commissions, they, they want to ensure that their work is being done by their representatives, whether it's here on council or other commissions. So I, I think the recommendations really get to that.
Thank you. Seeing to others, I'll, I'll make one comment, and that is that, uh, this, the recommendation is to remove the resolution that we passed in twenty eighteen, which allowed for three before coming for consideration, and this one is for four on the monthly, on the monthly meetings anyway. Okay, so, uh, public comment. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, closing public comment. And then that would mean possible action, uh, looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Okay, made by-
I'll second that.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz and seconded by Councilmember Tovar, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armendaris?
No.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, and that passed six to one. All right. Uh, next item on our agenda is consideration of a council correspondence policy for council agendas, and this is Jimmy.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Uh, before you is an item, uh, that I'm gonna go through and talk a little bit about, um, how we arrived at this agenda item tonight. Uh, the city receives communications from outside agencies, including like Valley Water, um, LAFCO, uh, other regional- other regional groups, and a lot of times those information, informational items that I feel should be on the agenda in order to communicate that to council. An example is, a few months ago, we, we had a letter from the city of San Jose asking us to take a position on the Valley Water ballot measure, and there's really no way to get that on the record other than putting it on the agenda for you to discuss. And in some ways, that's, that's seems to be a little bit overkill as it pertains to making you take a position on something you may not want to take a position on, and that's just an example. And so in order to communicate those kinds of items to you publicly, I placed on the June twentieth, twenty-two, a section called council communications. And that was the place where I could put things on there that you may decide you want to take action on, but I wanted you to be informed about them, and I wanted the public to know that I had informed you about them. And then council could take it from there. Another thing could be like the LAFCO budget where you don't vote on, but I would like to get that into the council packet that the council is aware of the LAFCO budget. And so that was placed on June twentieth, twenty-two. Soon after, I received some questions from council members about how this process works, what does it entail? And so it became very clear to me that even though the intention was good, it created some confusion, and I'm here tonight to try to see if we can get some clarity and get some direction from council to see if this is something you're interested in. At the end of the day, somebody has to be the gatekeeper of the council correspondence section. And that typically, I would think, would rely on the city administrator's role, because that way you can say, why did you put that on there? Why didn't you put that on there? And it really puts the responsibility on one person to manage that part of the agenda. The criteria for things that would be on that section would be communications from state, local governments, federal governments, school and special districts, other where the nature of the communication intersects with city business or a matter of concern. Policy directs that the city is not to accept requests to place items on the consent, or on the, excuse me, on the, on the council communication section. And so it would be mostly quasi-governmental governmental information. Typical subjects include communications pertaining to legal or operational impacts to the city, policy matters and requests for positions that could impact the city, and then regional issues and other agencies that may affect the city. The, the, the policy has to be somewhat flexible, and so, you know, the city administrator could include a communication of importance or unforeseen by the policy, or unseen by the policy, really. The communication that does not meet the policy would then be routed through the basic routing system by the city clerks, where we receive a letter, we email that out to council, but it wouldn't be placed on the agenda per se. So the recommendation tonight is for council to approve a council correspondence policy and authorize the city administrator implement the policy in the future city council meeting agendas, or should council not approve the council correspondence policy, that section would be removed beginning at the next council meeting, and you would have, then you would basically get those things through the agenda process and placed on the agenda by myself or what have you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions to clarify. That concludes my report.
Okay, oh, go ahead. I'll let council member Armandares go first. I, I have some comments, too. Go ahead.
Thank you. Jimmy, thank you. I, I think this is a really good idea, and it'll make for, you know, expeditious process and, and provide something where we didn't have a policy before, so I appreciate it. If you could clarify, though, when it comes to, you say, groups that may be included have a nexus with city business or matters of concern, would you include, because those that are named here explicitly don't include healthcare organizations or our network of nonprofits, and we know that the interaction that they have, the resources and services that they provide for our community, you know, either the city doesn't have the capacity to or the political appetite for, and so would you consider those, you know, any of our, of our nonprofits or service providers part of that nexus?
Probably. I would not, because I don't think they have a direct governmental correlation to what you're being asked to do or not to do. We communicate those letters and things through the clerk's office as well, that not being, you're not being asked to take a position, and so I would probably draw that line, that in most cases nonprofits would not be included on council correspondence.
Or Kaiser, right, being a nonprofit, but also a healthcare provider. In the time of the pandemic, we saw that we needed to partner a lot with them and Valley, you know, Valley Medical or the county's healthcare providers. Would you consider those also part of that nexus?
I think it depends on what the request is. If the quest, request is to partner, do the resources they're offering, I'd most likely put that in an agenda item, because that would take action from the council. But if it's just an advocating position, saying the city needs to do more, I don't think that would qualify.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, okay, councilor LaRoma Yos, you want to go next?
I'll be very brief. Jimmy, I'm very much in favor of having you or your office serving as a gatekeeper to all of this. I think it's important, because again, we've got so many issues that we could potentially be talking about, making sure that we are in control, and by we, I mean, you know, really the, the members up here deciding what we want to discuss and what not to discuss with our limited, you know, bandwidth and time. I, I think that's so incredibly critical. So I, I'm very much in support of the policy.
Okay, so I want, I'm, I'm gonna go and say my part, and then I'll go to council member Hilton, I see he just went up there. I've had quite a bit of discussion with, with Jimmy on the subject when he first created the section, because I wanted to know what it was, too. And I, I know that it came about because he needed to ask the council if we wanted to take a position on this water thing, and he was wondering how to do that without putting it on the agenda, like he in fact had done. Put it on the agenda, only to find that there was not a council member at all who wanted to support, you know, doing that. So this was just really meant for staff to be able to bring to us the things that would otherwise he'd have to put as a separate agenda item. It is not meant for the correspondence that we already get, that people can send us correspondence. It's not meant to put other organizations' correspondence on our agenda. That can still come to us. It's just meant for Jimmy alone to have a place to put things that he feels we need to see that go to him, if I'm explaining that correctly. Right. And if council has a problem or feels like it's too difficult to understand, then of course we can remove it. But it was his decision to put on, and then the questions immediately came.
And as I understand it correctly, we always retain the ability, if one of the members of council want to put something on the agenda?
That's the future, that's the future agenda stuff, right?
Exactly, we still have that outlet as well.
Yeah, this is, this is strictly for Jimmy's use, is why it's here. Okay, council member Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Jimmy, I think that you're, you're in the perfect position, out of all of us, to have, take the, you know, the, the objective on, on what you put in there. The only thing that I would ask is that you, you either put your email on there or what email is supposed to go, because those that are searching out this policy, or if we have organizations that, you know, that ask us information, like, hey, we want you guys to take a position on this, who do we, who do we contact? I can just give them the link, you know, and this link hopefully could end up on our website, the council's website, so that in that way, it's just one less thing for us to go text you and like, well, who, who should I send it to? Should they send it to you? Should they send it to Ty? I think it would just allow us to not, just be out of it and impartial, in case that is an item that we want to put on future agenda. Thank you.
And do you want to respond? I, I have responses to that, if you don't, okay.
My response would be that I always prefer everything to go to the clerk. That's what that position is for, and, and Ty routes things to me. Some things he just sends to council, but I think on these things where they're asking for action, he normally does ask me anyway. That way, it's gone through that, that, that office one single point. That's where the records are kept anyway, so.
Yeah, because this policy isn't changing what we already can do. It's not meant to be giving a, a new avenue to the folks who want to get council's attention, right? I mean, that's, is that correct?
Right, it, it is simply as I stated in those situations, like a, a position. Another one we had, we had that gentleman who was a legislator down in Southern California that wanted council to take a position on something, and the question is, how did this get on the agenda? Well, I didn't want to put it on the agenda, but I had no other way to get it to you, and so this would be that way that I could use.
Right, it's the way to, to let us know, and then the council would have the decision to say something about it or just let it go as correspondence. Okay, does anyone, what does this require? A motion? Or is this a public hearing? I have to open public comment. Do you have any?
I received no speaker cards on this matter, Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So this is?
Mayor, I'll move for approval.
Okay, as Jimmy is asking.
I'll second.
All right, and seconded by council member Armandares. So digital voting. All right, that's unanimous. Okay, before we get to eleven point four, I'd like to take a five-minute break, so we can do what we need to do in five minutes and be right back at eight oh five. Okay, I'd like to recall the, the meeting back to order. It's eight oh five. We are back in session, and we are on agenda item eleven point four. Okay, and this is on council discussion and direction regarding potential 2022 reach codes. Staff report, Dipolito Olmos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members and members of the public. My name is Dipolito Olmos, I'm a building official here at the city of Gilroy, and tonight we're gonna have a discussion and hopefully direction regarding the potential 2022 reach codes. So what are reach codes? They're amendments to the 2022 California Energy Code and the Green Building Code. They aim to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and it allows communities like the city of Gilroy to decide if they want to reach beyond the mandated state building codes. And they may include, but are not limited to all electric buildings, all electric appliances, the installation and preparation for electrical vehicles and electrical vehicle charging stations, and also a residential bicycle parking requirement. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, SBCE, they're an independent public agency and aimed at addressing climate change. They presented to council September thirteenth of 2021 regarding reach codes. City was here about three years ago also regarding reach codes. Council at the September thirteenth meeting directed staff to bring back information considering the reach codes, and they had five information requests at that time. The first one is, if the city converts to full electric with current rates, will new building owners be penalized for using more electricity than already in use? And what we found is that with higher prices for electricity plus increased usage, then it might mean higher utility bills. But there's a potential for reduction in usage of electricity based on efficiencies of new buildings and the addition of solar generating systems like PVs. The cost difference currently is unknown will vary depending on the type of building and how you use your home. So question number two is, what happens during power outages? Electric-only and mixed-fuel homes would essentially experience the same, because modern gas appliances require electricity to fully operate. Question number three, would requiring electric vehicle charging stations impact cost effectiveness for affordable housing? And not in a significant manner. Equipment materials, equipment and materials are small costs compared to the total construction cost, and the average cost for installing an EDCS is about eight hundred and thirty-three for a level-one station, and about a thousand three hundred for a level-two station. So the level, you guys have the details in staff reports, we've gone over this a couple times, is just how quickly it can charge your vehicle. What is the cost comparison of reach codes against current requirements for an average-sized home? So on the first portion there, an all-electric home, the cost to construct is about ten thousand five hundred and eighty dollars less than a mixed-fuel gas home, and the energy cost is about seven dollars more. Majority of that savings is in the infrastructure of the gas lines. Though underneath is an all-electric home with increased solar, so not just the minimum PV requirements for a house, but going above and beyond, and the capital cost is about the same with the energy cost about five dollars less a month. So for number five, what are the costs and opportunities, positive and negatives, around reach codes? So the cost and challenges is, we've experienced this a little bit, is reliability of electricity. Although suppliers have a service obligation and state that they will meet this need, we may have rolling blackouts. So this is the exception, not a guarantee. Electricity rates was another concern. Costs are, increase are expected just because of our historical experience with electricity continuing to raise or go up. The impact can be lessened due to efficiencies, as we spoke earlier, with PV and the way homes are constructed now. So benefits and opportunities. Some of the benefits requiring electrical vehicle charging stations or infrastructure at the beginning of a project when it's being constructed will, you know, they'll be ready. The homes are multifamily homes, are businesses, are industries, they'll be ready for folks that have EV vehicles there already. The numbers of EVs on the road is increasing, as all of us probably can tell or have seen. We all know someone who has an EV. The California state regulation is going to be requiring that all vehicles sold after 2030, which is scary, only like eight years away, will be EVs. And the need for homes and businesses and the requirement for electrical vehicle charging stations will increase in a lot of these homes. And the cost to retrofit all the homes that have been constructed is significant compared to constructing now. So having a reach of electrical vehicles and EV-ready will save future owners' costs in retrofitting, and the cost to retrofit is gonna vary due to market factors. So if equipment price comes down, but labor goes up, or vice versa. So the 2022 California Energy Code is the base energy code for new construction, and it provides energy credits to all electric buildings and requires additional energy-conserving materials and methods if a building is using natural gas. So if you have a home that has natural gas, you, someone get penalized already with the base code that we have. The 2022 California Energy Code does not ban gas-powered appliances, and it takes incremental steps towards electrical buildings, and the California Electrical Code will become effective, or the 2022 will become effective, January first, 2023. The reach codes, they're optional jurisdiction-specific code amendments. That means that us as a community get to decide what kind of reach codes we want to have. SBCE or organizations like them will give us some input on what they prefer to see, but it can be used to eliminate mixed-fuel buildings and require electrical appliances, like I stated earlier, or require EV charging stations or EV to be installed. There are also an environmental protection and sustainability enhancement efforts, and it's a growing trend, especially in the Bay Area, to adopt some or all reach codes, and basically speeding up the advancement of targeted codes in, in certain areas, specific areas. So there's three different ways to reach, that reach codes can be adopted. An amendment to the California Energy Code during the tri-annual adoption process, adopt the reach codes as city ordinance, somewhat like the city of Morgan Hill did with their gas ban, and an amendment to the California Green Code during the tri-annual adoption, similar to option one there. So there's various types and levels of reach codes available for council consideration, and I talked about this a little bit. In the staff report, I've included the list of California Energy Codes and Green Codes, changes for this code cycle. I also have the SBC recommendations and staff recommendations. The reach codes being discussed revolve around energy usage and green building codes, and none of the, of the recommended reach codes affect existing buildings. Some reach codes could potentially be a cost savings for future retrofits. And so what are the types of energy allowed for future development? Then there's three principal options city council can evaluate when determining the best path for the city. And option one is a mixed fuel, that's currently what the city of Gilroy has, and adopt the, adopt only the 2022 California Energy Code and none of the energy code reach codes, new construction uses, and mixed-fuel design. So that's currently what the city of Gilroy allows, so you both have electrical in your kitchen and gas, in your laundry room you might have gas, or will have gas and electricity. Most of the homes here are constructed like that. Electric-only, which is option two, would require that all or only certain types of new construction buildings will be all electric. So council could decide if they want to just do multifamily and residential and allow commercial and industrial buildings to remain as they are. And natural, and then option three is the natural gas ban, no new gas lines or infrastructure, so no gas. SBC recommends option two, which is the all-electric new construction and appliances, so homes would have all, all electric. Staff recommends option one, which is to adopt only the 2022 California Energy Code, the base code, and none of the reach codes associated with the energy code. The California Energy Code is advancing to address climate change, bring gas, bring gas house emissions reductions, and energy consumption at the state level, and permits a continued use of mixed-fuel buildings. Staff recommends that the city council not pursue options two or three based on current development, climate, local community trends, and local community trends. The California Building Codes are trending towards more energy-efficient The California Building Codes are trending towards more energy-efficient construction and staff is the only, staff is of the opinion that current cycle is not the time to implement either Option 2 or 3, which are more restrictive. SBC recommends a series of Reach Codes relating to electrical vehicle charging stations and EV readiness. Staff recommends the pursuit of most of these EV recommendations. At this moment, I just want to interject one thing. On slide, on your, in your staff report, on page, apologize for this. 425, under the new multifamily dwelling section, for 40% EV Level 2, it currently says capable. It should say 40% EV Level 2 electrical vehicle charging. The reason we made that change was we received an update from SBCE on their actual recommendation and we, staff agreed with the recommendation. And so I just want to let staff know that there's the only change on the table there. Can I just want to let you know about that? The cost for installing EV infrastructures that I mentioned earlier is cheaper than retrofitting after the fact. It provides future savings to property owners and a summary of EV-related codes with SBC and staff recommendations are included in the staff report. We had some community outreach. We had two public input workshops held on April 27th of this year. The developer workshop was in the afternoon and the residential workshop was in the evening. The workshops were introduced and hosted by community development and SBCE and residential verbal input was generally supportive of Reach Codes, the adoption for health and climate protection reasons. Fiscal impact, there's little to no fiscal impact to the adoption of Reach Codes and the publication cost for such an ordinance would be absorbed by the city's existing appropriations. And there's some alternatives here that council can take to direct staff to pursue any of the Reach Code options or direct staff not to pursue any Reach Code amendments. Staff recommends adopting EV and bicycle Reach Codes. They're useful tools that benefit residents, businesses and the environment. The California Building Codes are training to advance clean energy with each new code and EV readiness in new buildings can save future costs. Staff does not recommend an electric-only Reach Code at this time. Staff suggests a continued measured approach to promote development in the City of Gilroy. And our recommendations are, staff recommendations are that council deliberate and edit, modify or leave intact staff recommendations, direct staff to prepare code language for adopting staff-recommended Reach Codes, electric vehicle charging and EV-ready and residential bicycle parking. And three, direct staff to return to city council meeting for formal adoption of a final Reach Code language that will be incorporated into the 2022 California Green Building Code. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very, very thorough report. Thank you for the, for the report, both in writing and in person. Okay, Councilmember LaRoma Yost.
Hippolyto, thank you for the, for the report as well. With regard to the, the building Reach Codes, you mentioned that the construction, climate and local trends don't lend themselves towards a recommendation in that direction. Do you mind just spelling out a little bit about the climate and the local trends that you refer to?
Currently, all the buildings that are built in Gilroy have both mixed-fuel. So going to just all-electric currently will, not limit. Some folks are still not comfortable with buying houses that are only all-electric and only through educate, I don't want to overstep, but only through education can folks become comfortable with having all-electric homes. And so certain builders are still very comfortable with building both types of homes. And so that's what I mean by.
Okay, the climate and the trends. Got it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
I guess, I just, it's not really a question, it's more of a clarification for the public. You talked about the second workshop where citizens attended and you said that most of them were really in favor of all-electric in the homes. But I just want to point out to the public, there were only 10 individuals at that meeting, that workshop meeting, and many of them were not from Gilroy.
Correct.
So I think that's really important because I don't want anyone walking away going, oh, there was 300 people there and everyone was in favor, so.
Sparsely attended.
Thank you, okay.
All right, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, great, great presentation, thank you for that. And this is more of a question comment. You know, I know many, many of us have been told or sent emails stating that we're the only city in Santa Clara County that has not adopted Reach Codes. I guess my question is, with a statement like that, is it an all or nothing type thing? You know, if we, if we adopt, you know, say Option 1, what staff is recommending, does that mean that now we're one of the cities that adopted Reach Codes? Or are we still going to be considered a city that has not?
Correct. So when someone makes a comment that the City of Gilroy is the only city in Santa Clara County or municipality, basically jurisdiction, it's a correct statement. That, that statement is correct. What is, you have to define is the definition of a reach. So anything that you, that you guys implement above and beyond the code would be a reach. So in this case, these are specific to certain areas. All electrification, gas ban, electrical preference on electricity, EVCs, green building. So that would be a correct statement. There is, I believe, and correct if I'm wrong, there are six cities and the county of Santa Clara that have adopted a, five is all-electric and Morgan Hill had a gas ban. Then we have nine that adopted EV charging last code cycle, so three years ago. This year, we're proposing that we adopted EV, infrastructure EV-ready and bicycles.
So just to build on that, so if we have that EV charging, sorry about that, new phone. If we have that, if we adopt the EV charging goal beyond now, I mean, now we have a.
We're on the board.
We're, we're on the board, that counts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, because it pertains just to that, I asked Hippolyto for a list of all the cities because, you know, I get that too. And it was in a meeting I had with Silicon Valley Clean Energy too, where I said, wait a minute, so what have they adopted? And yeah, so two, two cities, Milpitas and Monty Sorino, they've only done the EV charging. They are encouraging electric and so, you know, I think we would like to do that too. And then as he said, six, so six of the 13 have done all-electric. And only, and Morgan Hill has done the all, the gas ban completely. So, right, so you qualify, you, you are considered someone who has adopted Reach Codes if you adopt any one thing exactly in, in the codes, which is what we are looking to do tonight. Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, thank you Hippo and to your staff, I appreciate your information and how thorough it is. But everyone, I, I think that, you know, not to say that the sky is falling, but the sky is falling, right? We are in a, in a place in time where we are dealing with wildfires, severe drought, you know, deadly flooding all over the country and deadly heat waves. And so there's no denying what awaits us. And I think that it, that calls for, for bold action. And we are just a city council, we're just the City of Gilroy. But I think that includes doing what we can in, as an impactful manner as we can, right? For the sake of not just our lives and our health, but those of generations to come. And so I, I do support an electric-only option. I know we don't have the, the will to do a natural gas ban, but I, I do think that we have to go as bold as we can. There isn't really any time to waste anymore. Like it's, the evidence is all around us every day. So, and, and given what you laid out here, that the cost would be minimal, there's all types of, of measures and all types of benefits to electric-only. I think, I think that we need to entertain that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to point out too, that Silicon Valley Clean Energy is, its board is made up of electeds, right? So those are our partners and those are our cities out there. And yes, we are the only ones that have not done anything since 2019. And, you know, I'm disappointed that, that you're not all the way there on the all-electric. But I've learned from many people before me that you never fall in love with your legislation because it doesn't work out all the time. I would like to see us move forward with an all-electric. I, I, I do disagree with you that, that you think people aren't ready for it. I'm, I think we're ready for it, I think the trades are ready for it. And I think we're ready to make that next step. And, you know, if for some reason this doesn't end up moving forward tonight, I, I, you know, I would like to see us carve out something tonight. And if not, let me know what you would like me to tell the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board when I show up for their monthly meetings. Tell me what you would like me to tell our partners, our fellow electeds out there on why we chose to do nothing, which hopefully that doesn't happen. And lastly, there was a really good public comment letter that I just, I want to read a portion of. And it says, Gilroy is falling behind other Bay Area cities in climate policy. The currently proposed mixed-fuel codes could burden residents with new gas pipelines that threaten public health, our climate and increasing building costs. All-electric buildings are cheaper to build, have healthier indoor air quality and are supplied with clean electricity from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions. On page, well, it doesn't matter what page, when it's an EV Level 1, electric charger versus Level 2. Level 2 is a higher capacity, right? So what does that mean? It would charge an electric vehicle faster?
Correct. It's, it's how many miles per hour they can charge.
Oh, miles per hour they can charge. Okay, and so in some percentage, you're recommending Level 1 and others a certain percentage Level 2.
So Level 1 is a more affordable charger, but it's, it's a slower charge.
Right.
Level 2 is a little bit more expensive charge, a faster charge. And then you could get like, you know, two superchargers and more commercial-type chargers.
So, so does that mean where, where, where you're recommending in the staff report to put, for example, under the multifamily dwellings, where you're 40% Level 2 and 60% Level 1?
Level 1 ready.
Level 1, yes, that's what I mean.
So just, so when it says ready?
Yes.
They have the infrastructure in place so that when someone is ready to have, they have.
That's my question though, is it an electrical panel that, that has to have a certain capacity?
So the electrical panel has a certain capacity, you have conduits in place, you don't have to tear out, you know, walls or anything.
Right, got it, got it.
It's just preparing for the future when the need arises.
Right, but it's not just a, it's not just a pipe that you feed things through. It has to be an electrical panel that has that capacity. Okay, and then on page 436 of the packet, where it lists the exceptions to which this, this would not apply. If we, if we do, if we adopt the, the reaches that you're suggesting. So we adopt reaches, but it's as you're suggesting here, the Option 1. The exceptions that are listed on page 436 under number 2, accessory dwelling units. It says accessory ADUs, accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, without additional parking facilities and without electrical panel upgrade or new panel installation would not.
Correct.
So.
So basically for ADUs or JDU's, typically they're taking part of a main service panel that you have outside your house, has some type of capacity, 400 amps, whatever maybe your JDU or ADU is going to only do 60 amps or let's say 100 amps. And so it doesn't require an electrical panel upgrade or the upgrade of service conductors from PG and things of that nature. So we didn't want to require ADUs and JDUs to have to put in EV charging stations or require it because it may trigger with the 60 amp or 100 amp and another 30 amp for your electrical EV charger. You may have to now upgrade your main service panel and that could be for a lot of older houses that are getting ADUs, it could become cost prohibitive.
But does that only apply to EV chargers? Or does that mean then that if somebody builds an ADU and it falls under these things that it's, that it's using the same electrical panel, it's already there? Does that mean then that in the new ADU, you cannot put an option for electrical stove, for example?
So you definitely could.
You could.
You could, but each site is going to be specific to the age of the home that was constructed. So if you have a modern home, you might have a large service panel, you may be able to do that. You have an older house, maybe, you know, might, might only have 125 amp panel. They, they may not be able to do that. So it depends on the type of building that you're going to retrofit. You got to look at it and get maybe an electrician to do a load calculation on it.
Okay, so some ADUs, depending on the property, like you said, some of those may fall under the category of already existing and therefore doesn't apply. But new construction would all, right, and I, I personally really like the idea of electric-ready because it gives people the option to do what's, what's best for them. And, and we don't know what the future is going to hold. With all these demands on electricity and electricity has to be manufactured, wind and solar are the only things that are better than the natural gas. So let's, you know, we gotta, we gotta be mindful of that too. Okay, those, those are my questions. So, public comment, did I, I didn't do that yet, did I?
No, you haven't, Madam Mayor, we do have two speaker cars. The first one is Enrique Navarro Del Neon and followed by Anthony Yulo.
Okay.
Or Yulo.
So you each have three minutes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Enrique Navarro, Government Affairs with the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors, or SCORE for short. On behalf of SCORE, we convey our support for the staff recommendation on this item regarding gas appliance Reach Codes. We encourage you all to support and proceed with Option Number 1, Mixed Fuel, AKA no adoption of Reach Codes. The Realtors, their clients and the electricians who contributed to the cost summary I shared with all of you via email, and I think it's in the public record by now too, are supportive of having energy options for their home consumption as it is respectful of their budgets and their needs. As the staff report states, more efficient electric appliances are still in early development stages. So it would be, it would, it would make sense to allow for the technology to be fully developed and tested before leaving ahead of the state on this matter. And I encourage all of you to refer to the document that I sent to each of you, there's an attachment. If you haven't already, detailing the expense of all-electric conversion, which still has costs applicable even for future only construction. So everybody can have an idea of the costs that homeowners can be expected to shoulder to accommodate such Reach Codes, not just changing appliances, but structural upgrades and home modifications that would have to be made to accommodate those home designs. And I actually spoke a lot faster than I thought I would, so that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks for being here. Okay, next.
Do I get to speak really slow to make up for?
Nope, you get three minutes.
Anthony Yulo from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, nice to see you all. I'll join the Hippolyto Fan Club, as you all complimented him. And I just want to acknowledge that we have a terrific working relationship with Hippolyto. And you guys are very lucky to have him. We, we communicate with the building officials from all 13 of our jurisdictions fairly often. And I, I am not lying when I say that he is the most responsive and responsible building official that we deal with. So kudos to you for employing him. With that said, you know, friends don't always see things exactly the same. And so as stated, SBC has advanced a model Reach Code. And in the last code cycle, 12 of 13 communities did engage in some form of Reach Code. I want to make the distinction, yes, they're not all-electric, that is absolutely right. But 12 communities did do something in the area of making their buildings more oriented towards an electric future. The, the base California Code has essentially caught up to those jurisdictions now. So in this code cycle, we're seeing communities like Milpitas that were very tepid supporters of the Reach Code in the first round, now going, and the building official is moving forward with an all-electric recommendation to their council this fall. So we're seeing movement, we're seeing enthusiasm amongst other jurisdictions as well that are outside of our service territory. And we only have 13 and we got 12 of them last time. But we're seeing the Peninsula and the East Bay, most of the communities engaging in this endeavor as well. So just, I guess maybe two points, I'm going to, I don't want to limit myself to two, but I have some points of clarification. First off, I would say that the staff report does, mentions that electricity rates are going up and does not mention that gas rates are going up too. And if we project rates in the future, the lines are fairly parallel on the, the cost increases that are expected. And certainly in the last year and a half, we've seen gas prices rise faster than electricity, right? So going to an all-electric, new construction doesn't necessarily have a negative cost impact to the consumer because gas rates are going up as well. Secondly, homes have been built all-electric for many decades. In some states, it's the most common form of, of development, like Florida, over 70% of the homes are all-electric. To, so to say that all the appliances are not ready, I think is a bit of a mistake. To, so to say that all the appliances are not ready, I think is, is a bit of a misstatement. I think that things are ready and, um, we're, we're here and ready to go. And other communities in this county are certainly doing it. Thanks for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other comments?
I have no other speaker cards, ma'am, ma'am.
Okay, then closing public comment and coming back to.
Here's a speaker.
What? Oh. Okay, you need to identify yourself. Okay. It would be nice.
We can do that afterwards.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I guess you came in late. I don't know.
You know, on this topic, I just, I'm James Polo and, uh, I live in a house I was built in two thousand and six. And I was sorely disappointed to find out that I can't have solar because of the angles on my house. And my whole neighborhood is in the same situation where they built these houses that weren't up to having solar installed, because the fire codes didn't allow it, because the actual edges of your house have to be within a certain range for the fire department to ventilate. So I just want to make sure that when these policies get in place, that they, uh, speak with new construction to make sure the housing and the roofing allows for solar. And that's it.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we have another council comment. Okay, council member Hilton?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, a clarifying question to that. Is it not true that all new construction has to have solar on top of it?
Good thing you asked that. I was going to mention that all homes now require a certain amount of PV. So the housing orientation now is something that is looked at and.
Paul, can you speak? We can't hear you. It's hard to hear you. Yeah.
So currently all homes are required to have PV panels installed.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so council, this is not something where we need a motion. It's just a direction to staff. I'd like to propose, uh, item three, as it says on our agenda, to direct staff to return to a future council meeting for formal adoption of final reach code language and incorporate such language into the adoption of the California Green Building Code, exactly as staff has recommended.
I have something different.
Okay, so let's do a thumbs up on the one and then we can go with the something different.
We're not going to do a motion?
It's not a motion. Do you want a motion on this?
Yeah, I want to, I want to do a motion, because if you're going to do thumbs up on, and then move along.
Okay, my, my council agenda doesn't ask for a motion. Is this something that should have a motion?
I would have a motion for it.
I'm happy to do a motion. I'm just saying that it's not here for me.
I would say it's preferable.
Okay.
I think there are several components in discussion about it.
Okay, so then I will make that motion. And did I have a second? Okay, it was seconded by council member Braco.
And I have a substitute motion.
Okay. Can we take a vote on this motion and then go to the substitute?
No.
Okay, what is your substitute motion?
I say that we, uh, I'd like to, to go with the electric-only construction, option number two, and staff recommendations for, um, EV charging and bicycle.
Okay, hearing no second?
Oh, I second, does it require a second, does it?
Yeah.
That's, oh, I seconded it.
And then we'll vote on it.
Okay, so am I unaware of this procedure now?
The mo, the, if the motion has been seconded, the appropriate process now is to vote on whether that motion should supplant the motion you made, mayor.
Okay.
It's not, you don't actually vote to adopt that motion. You're voting on whether it should be.
It should replace? Okay, so we need a roll call vote on this?
No.
No, a digital vote on whether or not the substitute motion should replace the original motion.
I would recommend a, uh, roll call vote on this one nonetheless.
Okay.
Council member Almerderris?
Yes.
Council member Braco?
No.
Council member Hilton?
Aye.
Council member Lee Ramunios?
Yes.
Council member Marks?
No.
Council member Tovar?
No.
And Mayor Blankley?
No. Okay, so that one fails to replace the original motion.
Right, so the original motion is still in place.
Right, so now we vote on the original motion.
Council member Almerderris?
No.
Council member Braco?
Yes.
Council member Hilton?
No.
Council member Lee Ramunios?
Yes.
Council member Marks?
Yes.
Council member Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, and that passes five to two. Okay, item eleven point five. Approval of Gilroy Management Association Memorandum of Understanding and Adoption of a Resolution Approving Associated Salary Schedules for the period of July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and Leanne will give us this report.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the community. Um, I'm going to cover item eleven point five and eleven point six in my PowerPoint presentation. And then, um, council can, uh, take actions on those items separately, just, uh, to, to get through the items since they're kind of blended together. And, uh, city administrator Jimmy Forbes and I are going to tag team on the second report. So there will be a, a part of the report where he's going to come down and take over and then I'll be back. So tonight on the council's agenda, we have a memorandum of understanding and salary resolutions for your consideration and approval. These relate to the Gilroy Management Association, our full-time, unrepresented, confidential exempt employees, our part-time, unrepresented exempt employees, and our unrepresented exempt at-will department head employees. So we'd be starting off with the Gilroy Management Association. So a couple of points, uh, relative to this, uh, especially for the public, is that the city of Gilroy is a public employer. And so our employees have labor contracts associated with, uh, their wages, hours, and working conditions, um, for their positions here at the city of Gilroy. And, um, we fall under the Myers-Millias Brown Act and we have a collective bargaining process where we need to negotiate with our labor groups. Um, as you did at the July first, twenty twenty-two meeting, uh, you approved the labor contract and salary resolutions for the AFSMI group and the FIRE union. And so tonight, the last group that has a contract open is the Gilroy Management Association. So Gilroy, the, this group is one of five bargaining units we have here at the city of Gilroy. And this group represents approximately thirty mid-management employees, holding varied positions. And I listed some of them up on the screen for this PowerPoint, so you can, uh, just be reminded of, of some of the employees that are covered in this group. So the agenda item tonight is to review and approve the memorandum of understanding, uh, for the Gilroy Management Association bargaining group for the next three fiscal years, fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Uh, so we just recently concluded those negotiations consistent with the direction that the city council provided to us in closed session. And a copy of the MOU, the memorandum of understanding, and the corresponding salary schedules for this labor group are included in your agenda packet. So you have those full documents, uh, to review. So a couple reminders with respect to this group. Um, there was no salary increase, uh, received by this group in fiscal years twenty-one or twenty-two. And in fact, in fiscal year twenty-one, the Gilroy Management Association group took a nine point two-three percent pay reduction, um, for ten months of that year. They also took other benefit reductions in fiscal year twenty-one. And this was related to the COVID recession and the city's need to balance the budget. And we looked to our employees and the managers stepped up and took cuts in order to help balance the budget and avoid further layoffs. And then in addition, due to the reduced staffing, our managers, uh, took on additional work, because the work didn't go away. We just had less people to do it. Everyone in the city stepped up and took on additional work, but the managers absorbed a lot. And they can do more because they're exempt and they don't get paid overtime. So this, uh, agreement is a three-year term, like I said, seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty-five. It has cost of living MOU salary increases of five percent in each year, seven one twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then in seven one of twenty, on seven one twenty-four, there's a three percent range extension, um, added to the end of the salary range, which required, the only way a manager can get to that portion of the salary range is if they, um, have completed five years of service. They've been, they've spent one year or more at, at ninety-five percent or more of the range, and they have a meets expectations or better performance evaluation. Then they could move into that last three percent of the range, uh, that's attributed to this extension. Um, the package contains a freeze on the city's contribution to medical and dental. Uh, those dollars were repurposed to the salary increases that we have listed in the report, uh, because that was more important to this group, was to put money on the salary schedule. In addition, um, the agreement allows our non-safety managers to test and qualify for Spanish, English bilingual pay. In the past, that's only been available to our safety managers. It's now expands it to our non-safety managers. Uh, there's an option for vacation cash out, sixty hours in fiscal year twenty-three, forty hours in fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. And this actually gets time off the books, reduces an accrued liability, and pays out the time at a lower rate. Um, so it's actually a kind of a win-win item. Um, there is an item for, um, the, uh, grade four collection system certification pay of three hundred dollars per month for a single classification of senior environmental engineer. This is our engineer that is assigned out at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, so this certification is important for the work that's performed by this person. And it's similar to the certification that's available to some of our public works maintenance employees that do work on our sewer system. And then, uh, there's an item that allows, um, uh, Gilroy Management Associate, Association members that are promoted from within our Gilroy Police Officers Association up to being managers, um, in this unit. Um, the, there's a health reimbursement benefit that's actually a little bit less for the managers than what's available in the police contract. And so we, we want to allow those folks to retain what they had at the time of their promotion. And then, uh, the contract contains the, the reinstatement of twenty hours of personal leave, uh, time that was given up in fiscal year twenty-one by this group. And then if it's not used during fiscal year twenty-three, it'll be cashed out with the June twenty-three payroll. We did some cleanup of language for clarity and compliance. And then this group, like the AFSMI group, um, has a non-MOU request for the council to consider adding two additional holidays, such as Caesar Shabbos Day and/or Juneteenth. The fiscal impact of this, uh, agreement with the Gilroy Management Association over the three-year period is about nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So, uh, three hundred and eleven, six sixty-seven annual average. Sixty-two percent of that is attributed to the general fund and thirty-eight percent to other funds. I will pause for a moment with any questions that you have regarding this labor group.
Any questions, council? I just have one. Go back to the previous slide. I just didn't understand something. The very last thing, um, a non-MOU request, what, what does that mean?
For me to tell you that they would like you to add these, uh, two holidays, which was the same thing that happened with the AFSMI group on July first, because we feel that, um, addition of holidays is a policy decision by council that, um, the decision to close down city services on particular days that we, uh, then identify as observed city holidays is a, is the council's discretion and, um, but they would like you to consider it.
Okay, even though you can't do it for just a one group of employees?
Well, it affects the whole city.
Exactly, that's what I mean, that's what I mean. Okay.
So this group, in addition to the AFSMI group, wants you to take that under consideration.
Okay, got it.
And then with respect to this Gilroy Management Association group, I, I just want to give a little, um, shout out to the team of people that I worked with for coming, getting to the place of reaching this agreement. I mean, obviously, council, you, you ultimately give us the authority to work through this negotiating process and for that, we're extremely appreciative. But I'd like to just thank Jason Smith, Captain Smith, who's here tonight, uh, Hippolyta, he's here tonight too. Karina Boxa was here earlier. They worked hard on this process. It's, it's not easy for them. They have to step up and do this in addition to their job. And, um, not, not everyone wants to do it, so I just wanted to say thanks to them for their hard work in getting this done.
Okay.
Okay, I'm moving on to the next group. It's our full-time, unrepresented, exempt, confidential mid-management employees. Uh, this covers six employees in various positions, um, that are listed, our city clerk who's council-appointed, finance manager, HR analyst, et cetera. Um, we're following the similar package to what was received by the Gilroy Management Association group. Three years, same cost of living increases, same range extension, um, also the freeze on medical and dental. Um, the bilingual pay would also be allowed, as with the vacation cash out and the reinstating the twenty hours of personal leave. The other items that were in the Gilroy Management Association package don't really apply to this group, so I did not list them here. Um, and then we have part-time temporary unrepresented exempt employees. Uh, we currently only have three employees in this non-benefited category. We have a part-time network administrator and we have some retired annuitants that occasionally come to work for us. Um, they, we would, in order to maintain equity across our salary schedule, we would apply the same, um, cost of living salary rate increases over the three-year period. And now I'll hand it over to Jimmy to discuss the last group here.
Okay, last but not least, I have the unrepresented, uh, exempt confidential at-will department head employees. Just basically your department heads, that, that, all that language is confusing. Uh, we have six department heads, um, you know them all well. They're all here for council meetings. And this is the last group. This is the only group we, uh, we do not have, uh, MOU with. Uh, we do a salary resolution and the concept was the same, uh, salary and benefit-wise that we did with GMA and with our, uh, unrepresented employees. Uh, background information, this is repetitive, uh, no raises in twenty-one, twenty-two, nine point two three, nine point two-three percent pay cut in twenty-one. And due to reduced staffing, department heads absorbed additional work. Everybody absorb, absorbed additional work, everybody. As with other management positions, it's challenging to recruit at the department level. This is the most difficult positions to, um, to recruit and retain. Uh, we have the great resignation and then not everybody, believe it or not, wants to be a department head. It is, uh, additional workload and stress in a department head position, uh, so it's, it's not for everybody. Uh, the terms of the resolution are very similar to, uh, GMA, three-year period, uh, seven one twenty-two to six thirty twenty-five, with five percent cost of living increases annually. As we stated in, uh, previous negotiations and approvals that you gave, the CPI was a little over five percent. So, uh, we're barely, um, trying to match what's going on in the economy right now. Uh, range, retention range extension, uh, this is a three percent range extension, similar to GMA, uh, for department heads that are five, five years of service and one year more at ninety-five percent of the range. It meets expectations of performance, uh, or better performance evaluation. And then allow non-safety department heads to test and qualify for Spanish, English, bilingual pay. Something we haven't had before, um, but shows our commitment to, uh, to trying to have a more bilingual and reward those, encourage those who are bilingual to come to Gilroy. Terms of the resolution, uh, reinstate twenty hours, uh, personal leave given up in fiscal year twenty-one. And if not used in fiscal year twenty-three, be cashed out. Uh, vacation cash out option is eighty years per fiscal year. Uh, that solves a couple of problems. It reduces our liabilities and some of our department heads are very stubborn and will not take time off. Continue existing cost share on medical and dental premiums, five percent increase to the city contribution annually. That's currently, um, what we do. Uh, one thing we did have to adjust is the salary scales because of compaction. As other, um, bargaining units, uh, got raises in the last few years, their salaries have crept up and compacted. We're asking for some adjustments that are in the salary schedule. Um, and, uh, as with any pay for department heads, the city administrator determines where they are at in the, uh, the salary schedule. Uh, typically, your newer department heads are at the bottom, your more seasoned, uh, tend to be at the top. And we've been very consistent with that. Uh, the last item I, I want to ask council's approval of is that, um, although I would love to add positions, the whole goal of this labor negotiations was to essentially keep the team together. Uh, we didn't want to lose people anymore. We like the results we're getting, uh, as an organization. The projects, the things that you're seeing happening in your town are because of the group all the way down from, um, our lowest paid employees to our highest. So we, every labor negotiation contract we did was about keeping the team together. Uh, so although I would love to add positions, that was not our focus and it will not be our focus as we go through the nuts, but, next budget cycle. But one thing I think is very important is that the organization needs to clear number two. Uh, we are a very, we're not a small city any longer. We're a larger city and a city of our size would typically have an assistant city administrator or a deputy. I'm not asking you to, um, approve of a position, but I'm asking you to give me the authority to designate a current department head to be designated as the city's assistant city administrator. And that would be, uh, special projects, uh, organizational initiatives, items like that for a department head that can show that they are able to handle the workload that they have and they can help a little bit more at a little higher level. And so, um, they would also serve as the acting city administrator when I'm not available for vacation training and I have no planned illnesses. So that, that hopefully isn't a problem. And then that would include a special assignment pay of five percent. Uh, one thing I want to point out is that you either get the bilingual or the special assignment, but you don't get both. So we're not stacking them on top of each other. You're only eligible for one. And then all other benefits consistent with the GMA employee group. Uh, let's see, this is all unrepresented exempt employees. And this is all the full-time, unrepresented, confidential mid-management, our part-time exempt, and then our department heads. In total, uh, the fiscal impact is four hundred and sixty-one thousand over three years. That comes out to about a hundred and ten thousand annually for the general fund, uh, once you figure in the, uh, the enterprise funds and all that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'll have to probably ask Leanne to answer them for you and also take you through all these actions that are numerous and, uh, complicated. And so I'll turn it back over to Leanne. Thank you.
Okay, Leanne, can I go to council for questions now or do you still have more of a report?
Nope.
Okay, so do any council members have questions before we start going through? Council member Tovar?
Thank you, mayor. Um, well, Leanne or to Jimmy, um, or city administrator, thank you for the comments in regards to encouraging bilingual and diversity, you know, and I, I think, and I'm, I've been going through this, trying to. And I think, and I've been going through this, trying to find, and I understand it may not be recognized at a city level, but in regards to the Cesar Chavez holiday. Remind me, wasn't that something that was requested from the group?
So the, both the AFSMI group and the Gilroy Management Association group made requests for the council to consider additional holidays. And so, as I mentioned, we're bringing it to you as a non-MOU item because we feel it's a policy decision of council to decide what holidays the city is going to observe as a city organization because we shut down city services absent public safety on those days. And so that's a policy decision for the council to make. And so we can't really negotiate that into individual contracts. But we can bring it to your attention and ask that the council give it consideration at some point in the future.
Got it. So I just want to make sure I understand that. So even though it's not part of, considered part of the holiday, we as a council can...
Declare.
Declare.
That we're going to observe additional...
Right, and I guess maybe this is for the entire council. Maybe, and again, going back to our city administrator's comments. I mean, obviously, diversity and bilingual. I mean, and I think it's time for us to recognize that holiday. So I hope that we have that discussion soon.
So that would be an item for a future council agenda?
No, no, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. And I'll bring that up again.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can bring up at our next retreat. You know, we have a next budget that's where a lot of the stuff, the community center people are talking about. That's where all that stuff belongs. Yep. Okay, do you want to take us through then?
Other questions? Any other questions?
So one at a time, right?
Okay, so you have the recommended actions.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Oh, public comment.
Public comment, yes.
Okay, do we have any?
I have none for this item on 11.5. And I do not have any speaker cards for 11.6 either.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period for 11.5 and then I'll close it again just in case somebody, something comes up. Okay, so for now, it's open and closed. And we have, so possible action, item A.
So you're going to start with 11.5 and actions related to the Gilroy Management Association group?
Correct, so we are looking for a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Gilroy, amending the budget, right, for fiscal year '23 to implement the terms of the GMA MOU for fiscal year '23 and authorizing the inclusion of appropriate funds in the future fiscal years '24 and '25 budgets for salary and benefit expenditures related to the implementation of the MOU.
Still moved.
Okay. Okay, so that's made by Councilmember Leroy Munoz, seconded by Councilmember Tovar? I think that's what I heard. Okay?
Let Carol say it first.
No. Go ahead, Ty.
She'll say it after.
All right. Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, so that's unanimous. All right, then B is looking for a motion to approve the MOU between the city and GMA for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you guys identify yourselves.
Well...
It was Councilmember Tovar made the motion.
Yes.
And the second was?
Me.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares. Okay, this is digital voting. Waiting on, there we go. All right, that passed unanimously. And then C, adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Gilroy, approving the July 1, 2022, July 1, 2023, and July 1, 2024 salary schedules associated with GMA MOU.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilmember Marks.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Armandares. And this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz? Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, all right, that's also unanimous. Going to 11.6. Any public comment come forward?
I did not receive any speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing public comment on 11.6. And the first item is A. So looking for a motion to adopt the resolution of the city council, the city of Gilroy, amending the budget fiscal year '23 to implement the terms of the salary resolution for the full-time, unrepresented, confidential exempt mid-management employees. Part, do I have to read all this? I'll keep going. Yes?
I think you can say, as shown on the agenda.
Okay, as shown on the agenda.
Yeah.
Still moved.
This one's particularly long. Okay, moved by Councilmember Leroy Munoz and seconded by Councilmember Marks. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, all right, that passed unanimously. Item B is adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Gilroy, approving the July 1, 2022, '23, and '24 salary schedules for, as shown, for the employees as shown on the agenda. Need a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Councilmember Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Leroy Munoz. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, so that's unanimous. Now that just leaves the request to designate a deputy city adminis... Does something need to be said about that?
That was included in the resolution.
Oh, it was? I didn't see it. Okay.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Okay. No, that's fine. I mean, as long as it's in there. Okay, thanks, Leanne. Okay, city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a quick informational item for you that I wanted to inform the council about. The city was approached some time ago by the International City and County Management Association to discuss about highlighting some of the economic development initiatives that the city of Gilroy has undertaken in the last year or two. And so this was an excellent opportunity for us to finally say to people, what is Gilroy doing? Because as a city administrator, the one thing that I hate is when people say, what are other cities doing? I want people to say what Gilroy's doing. And so we were a little taken aback by being acknowledged by the ICMA. And so as part of that, they will be in town on August 4 doing a video recording of what's going on in Gilroy. And so part of that day that they'll spending here, spending here, will be interviewing some of our economic development partners that visit Gilroy, Jane in particular, and then the Chamber of Commerce, Mark Turner, and then our own mayor and myself, and talking about why we did what we did, how we did it, and what were some of the things that we've been through and that we could share with other communities